All right. I believe, Sam, that you said everything was ready to go?
You're ready.
All right. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. It is 9:01 a.m. Today is August 3rd, 2021. This is our regular meeting for the County Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. And I believe we have a moment of silence from Supervisor Piska. Is there any other moment of silence from anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and get started with that.
Yeah, so am I on?
Yeah.
No?
No, that's off.
I had it on. There we go. Well, I'd just like to take this opportunity for all of us to contemplate how we can work through our fears and anxieties and even anger to figure out how we can come together, as we have so many other times, as a community to fight this COVID battle on a united front.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we've received already two extra items that occurred after the posting of our agenda. First, we need to approve the consideration of those items. But before we do so, are there any other extra items from board members or staff? None? Okay, let's go ahead. I know at this moment in time, we're very tight on time for Dr. Pace. So I'm actually going to get to these items a little bit later for the approvals to add them to the agenda. We are going to go straight to the consent agenda, and then we'll go ahead and go to our item 6 point or 7.5 in order to make sure that we have the time allowable for Dr. Pace to speak with us today. So let's go ahead and go through the consent agenda real quick. Any items that wish to be pulled other than item 5.7 and 5.11, which will be pulled? 5.7 for further agenda and 5.11 for further discussion and clarification. Any other items from the board? No? And I believe that I got all the items that I spoke with the administration for. So any other items from the public that you wish to pull in order to speak further on from the consent agenda? If you are on Zoom, please dial *9 if you have an item that you wish to pull to raise your hand. Or if you are going in digitally, you have the button at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand. And I see we have Avaha Rose. This is again to pull an item from the consent agenda. If you wish to speak on any other items, we'll get to those items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Sabatier, regarding your comment last week, I am wondering, how does deciding to comprehend scientific viewpoints with zero funding interest?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is not the time for public comment at this moment. We are asking who wants to pull an item from the consent agenda. We will not skip public comment. We will get to that, okay?
Okay.
If you do not wish to pull an item from the consent agenda, then we'll move on. And come back to the board again, pulling 5.7 and 5.11, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.6, 5.8 through 5.10, and then 5.12.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Randall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we will get to 5.11 later on today. We're going to move straight to our COVID update, our item 7.5. And let me see here, we do have Dr. Pace with us, whose beard has grown tremendously since the last time we've seen him. Welcome back, Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everybody, the board. And yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Gary Pace, the former public health officer in Lake County, and I now have another job. So I appreciate your working with me around the timing because I have to jump off at 10:00. But I was asked to come and provide some more information on COVID, especially around the Delta, the changes coming with the Delta variant. So I did see a tape of the presentation last week with Dr. Evans and Sarah, and you know, it's very concerning the situation in Lake right now. And so I think it's really important for people to be informed and to be taking the right precautions. And there's a lot of changes happening right now. So I'll be real brief. I know people want to get on and kind of give their perspective on how things, how they see things are unfolding, and so I want to be sure to give them time. But I think Sarah's here, and she should go first and give the data.
Good morning, Supervisors. I have a brief update. It's fairly similar to last week. First, just we'll start with testing in Lake County and statewide. Testing continues to increase. Lake County is testing at a rate similar to the state right now. The testing positivity in Lake County, the seven-day average, is about 16%, significantly higher than the state. But you can see this really steep line since mid-June that the state is increasing rapidly in terms of its testing positivity. We are now seeing a daily case rate of about 50 per 100,000, which is what we expected based off the numbers that we saw last week. Lake County, as we stated last week, has had the highest daily case rate in the state for pretty much the entire month of July. And the state daily case rate, the most recent, is about 17 per 100,000. And you can see the slope of this line here, and I expect that to continue to increase. There have, there's been an additional COVID death since we spoke last week, bringing the total in Lake County to 66. So there have been three COVID deaths in the month of July among Lake County residents. And I know that several other deaths are currently under review. Okay, here is the Epi curve that we looked at last week. We were looking at this number and concerned about this increase in cases that we've seen since mid-June. In the last seven days, as of yesterday afternoon, 320 new cases have been identified, bringing the total to nearly 4,400. What I want to note on this graph is that I, you'll see the N is different here. This graph is showing about 100 fewer cases. That's because the data haven't come over from the second system. So I expect to see, once that happens, the contact tracing and case investigation happens, that we'll see this line increase and be more similar to the previous week. I do not believe that we're seeing a decrease. Just wanted to give you a more regional perspective. Again, here's Lake County. This is the daily case rate over time since the beginning of April. Here is Lake County, showing about 50 per 100,000. It will increase over the next couple of days, and I expect over the next couple of weeks. Your neighbors in Mendocino and Napa and Sonoma are about seeing an increase similar to the state, approaching 20 per 100,000. In Lake County, on July 31st, at a point in time, it was reported that there were 31 COVID hospitalized patients. From this graph, this gives you the view of the entire pandemic. You can see the 14-day average is approaching 10 hospitalized people, which is, is, you know, looking similar or reaching towards what we saw in the winter surge. Of course, this doesn't include people who are transferred out of county and receiving hospital care out of county. Three COVID ICU patients on July 31st. Again, you can see the 14-day average and how that compares to the rest of the pandemic. So as we discussed, vaccination is one of the best interventions we have to reduce hospitalizations and deaths. The latest data tells us that 53% of people 12 and older are fully vaccinated in Lake County. That's 29,000 people. And 40% of the eligible population remains unvaccinated. Lastly, I want to share a bit of good news. We are seeing in Lake County and statewide, an increase in the number of people who are getting their first doses. So you may have seen this reported nationally as well. So starting in sort of early July, the seven-day average of someone getting their first dose was 47 people. And you can see over the month of July that this has increased in Lake County to 86. So there's speculation that that's people responding to a variety of things. I think a lot of the thinking is that's in part people seeing friends and family get vaccinated and concern about the Delta variant. So the graph on the bottom shows the entire, you know, since the end of December when the vaccines first became available, Lake County is the darker blue. You can see the rolling average of first doses. So here we see this, this increase. So this is positive news. And as you continue your efforts, just of note that the 18 to 49-year-old population, about 56% of them are unvaccinated, and we still have more than 1 in 3 people over the age of 65 who are unvaccinated. And these certainly should be target populations because they're at higher risk for severe illness and death. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. So as you can see, the situation's kind of worrisome. The hospitals are filling up, and the cases are increasing with no end in sight. And there's still a lot of vulnerable people out there that are unvaccinated. And so I just wanted to go over, the situation's changing a lot now, right now, and I just wanted to kind of point out some of those changes and maybe give a little bit of, kind of, context to it all. So I think the most important thing to remember is that the vaccine continues to be very protective against serious illness and death. So this is really a blessing, and I think it should be kind of, the most important thing to think about is vaccination and how well it's working. It's, it's getting a little more confusing because it seems that people do get infected when they, even though they've been vaccinated. But what's being done by getting vaccinated is you're protecting against serious illness and death. And the data is very clear about that at this point, that, you know, 90% of the people in the hospitals are, are unvaccinated and tend to be younger, tend to be the 20s, 30s, 40-year-olds now, because the older folks tend to be vaccinated. This is around the state and around the country. So 90% of the people in the hospitals are unvaccinated. The people that are vaccinated, that tend to end up in the hospitals or dying, are folks that are older or have, generally have, are older or have other underlying immune compromised situations. So, you know, if you get vaccinated, you really don't have to worry much about hospitalization and death. The things that, kind of, a bunch of new information's come out in the last week. The Delta variant appears to be way more contagious than we originally thought, and it does seem that the vaccinated people can get it and can spread it and can spread it to other vaccinated people. So this is, this is partly why it seems like this thing is sort of gaining momentum, even in counties where there's a lot of high vaccination rates, the people. So that's where a lot of these masking discussions are coming in place and all that, is that for us to be able to stop the spread, vaccination is not adequate. But vaccination is good for stopping people getting really sick and dying. So I'm caring for people now. I'm doing clinical medicine again, and the unvaccinated people can get really sick. Not everybody who's unvaccinated who gets, who gets infected gets sick. But if you see somebody that's unvaccinated and they're, they're testing positive, we worry a lot more. The vaccinated folks tend to be getting ill. Some of them are getting ill, but it's sort of like the flu, you know? They feel crummy for a little while, and then they get better, and it goes, they go on about their business. So really, what we're starting to see is two groups. The vaccinated group, which doesn't have to worry that much, and they, but, you know, they can get the infection and they can get sick. The other thing that they have gone is that they're able to, there's getting to be a lot of restrictions going in place now. People having to show vaccination cards to go into certain places, to get, to do certain kinds of travel, different kinds of things like that. So, and I think that's going to get to be more and more as this thing unfolds. And then there's, so there's two groups. The vaccinated group that tends to not have to worry too much about getting real sick, and the unvaccinated group, if they get in contact with somebody that's a confirmed case or they start getting sick, then the, you know, it can go badly. And also now they're starting to have to kind of justify things and having to show proof, they're, they're being required to show proof of vaccination to get into certain places, and it's not always going well. So I think the next point I want to make is the hospitals are filling up. The Lake County hospitals are filling up. Sarah reported there that there are 13 positive, COVID-positive cases in the hospital, and there's three COVID-positive cases in the ICUs locally. There's only really eight beds kind of at baseline in Lake County in the ICU. So, you know, it's about, you can see that there's a fair amount of, of capacity being taken up by COVID patients. The, it's important because it, it impacts everybody in the county. So if somebody's having a heart problem and they show up in the ER and there's no beds because a bunch of these beds are filled up, that becomes a problem for, for everybody. And as always in Lake County, transportation between hospitals is always an issue. And, you know, it's just a problem to get people out of the county if, if we need to. Also, the neighboring counties are now starting to experience a lot of people in the hospitals. So for example, in Sonoma County, on Sunday, there were 59 people that were COVID-positive in the hospitals and 15 COVID-positive folks in the ICU. So, and, so, you know, this is just, we're starting to see some of what we saw in the wintertime, where the hospitals were filling up and it was getting a little bit anxiety-provoking about if we were going to have enough capacity for everybody. At this point, regionally, it seems to be okay, but, you know, the numbers are continuing to rise. And I think one of the important points is, is if we had not had the vaccination push going on the last several months, the hospitals would be probably overwhelmed at this point. So we're, we're very fortunate that all that work has gone into it, and all the people have agreed to go ahead and get the vaccinations. So masking is another question that comes up. So, you know, masking clearly helps, I think, when there's these discussions about the data. I don't think the data is in question anymore. And this virus is so much more contagious than the other viruses that it's, it only makes sense to just do whatever you can to slow down and decrease the transmission. Indoor masking is, is starting to become a big issue. It just came out today that the Bay Area health departments have, are making indoor masking mandatory now. So, and the businesses are going to be the ones that are responsible for enforcing this. So it's, you know, it goes into effect today, I believe. And so this is the neighboring counties, Sonoma, Marin, down there. Napa is not doing it. The Board of Supervisors in Lake, my understanding is, you all came out with a recommendation that masking occur indoors, and I think this is only common sense. So I think this is a very, very good idea, and I think it's important to, for people to do this as much as possible. Higher-risk situations outdoors, it's probably smart to wear a mask there, too. Again, this is much more transmissible than before. And so even when before, when you could get away with kind of doing things and not getting sick, you say, well, I didn't wear a mask all last year, it didn't matter. This thing is a lot more transmissible, and I think you should take whatever precautions you can to slow it down for your own health and also for the, just the community good. There's been some questions about events, like what should people do about planning for events? And the state guidelines haven't really changed yet, so you can go on the CDPH website and, and check those out. But, you know, outdoor events are allowed, there's distancing recommended, and, you know, suggestions about hand washing and masking and things like that. But I think these will probably get tighter in the coming weeks. And I think for folks that are planning for, say, September and October, you know, there's a, there's like what you can get away with, and then there's what's, makes good sense. And so, you know, I think you probably need to be anticipating that this is going to get worse in the next month or two, and that there are things you can do to minimize risk in terms of masking, in terms of requiring vaccination, things like that. And, you know, being outdoors is by far better, less crowded is by far better. All these kind of things can help because there are these super-spreader events that are happening around the country. And, you know, if you're doing a, you know, a fundraiser or something, you really would not want to be, have it be a super-spreader event that somebody had a bad outcome from. So how do you do all this? You know, the guidance is changing very quickly. The state guidance is in place, but, you know, there's the same kind of common sense measures to decrease transmission going forward. So just a couple more things, and then I'll be done. If people are symptomatic, you should get tested. If you're vaccinated and symptomatic, you should get tested. And if you're positive, you stay home for 10 days, notify your contacts, all the same as before. If you're negative, it's probably something else. You know, if you're symptomatic and your test comes back negative, it's probably not COVID, and you're, especially if you're vaccinated, you're probably okay to move forward. If you're unvaccinated and you're symptomatic, you should get tested. And if you're positive, stay home and let your contacts know, same thing as before. And especially if you're unvaccinated, you should monitor if you're getting sick because, you know, if you get really worsening and short of breath, you probably need to think about going to the emergency room because this is, this can get really bad if you're not vaccinated. If you're a close contact of a confirmed case, vaccinated folks, the recommendation right now, it's very different. It's like you just monitor for symptoms and you can go to work, you can go do things. If you're unvaccinated, you should go into quarantine like before. So there's a big split there if you're a close contact to a confirmed case, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So, you know, again, these things are changing quickly. It's very confusing, and I think we just have to try to do the best we can moving forward. We're learning new stuff every day. So just a couple conclusions, and then I'll stop. This virus is changing, the guidance is evolving, and we're probably not going to be reaching herd immunity anytime soon. I think the hope was is that we would get to a certain level of vaccination rates, for a certain level of kind of people who had been infected, and we would have 90% or something, and we'd reach herd immunity. It looks like that's not going to happen now because even when you're vaccinated, we're still able to transmit it. So it's going to keep going around the community. So we're probably going to be dealing with this for a while. Eventually, our immune systems will learn to cope with this virus, and it will probably end up to be more like a flu situation, or maybe even like the common cold situation where it's just kind of low level. But right now, our immune systems have not seen this thing before, and we're, you know, struggling to keep up with it. The vaccines do help. It's hugely helpful. This is really a blessing of modern science that we've been able to get this. And, but it's, what it's doing is slowing it down and protecting people from the severe illness. It's not slowing down the transmission, and this virus is continuing to mutate, so we'll have to see. I would suspect we're going to be needing booster shots down the road at some point, but we'll have to see how that goes. And so I think, you know, the bottom line is, I just encourage everybody to take this thing really seriously. We're in a, we're in a new phase now. You know, we were kind of hoping this thing was going to draw to a close. It's not. It's not going to anytime soon. And now, but it's getting more complicated, vaccinated versus unvaccinated. The masking guidance is changing, and, you know, I think it's just, you know, we just have to do the best we can. I really encourage people, if you've been thinking about getting vaccinated and haven't gotten around it yet, to go do it, do it as soon as possible. It takes a few weeks before the protection really kicks in, and so the sooner you get there, the sooner you're going to be less at risk of getting, getting in trouble. And so I think that's it. Thank you. I think if there's specific questions about the local response, Denise is here, and I think Carolyn might be here as well, so they'll be able to answer that more. But that's kind of the overview of the current thinking now about the, the way it's going with the Delta variant. So thank you.
Dr. Pace, thank you very much for your presentation and coming back to spend time with us to discuss this unfortunate reoccurring issue that just doesn't want to go away. Let's bring it to the board. We have Supervisor Piska with a comment.
Hi, Dr. Pace. Thank you for coming today. It's really great to see you. I was just wondering if maybe Sarah could help us understand the age range of the people that are hospitalized and also the age range of the three people that have died this
Hi, Supervisor. For the, I don't have the information on the three deaths that happened this month, the age range. I can, I think, I'll pull up the data of the, of all deaths while move on to other questions and be able to share that today. For hospitalizations, and I think we've discussed this at the, at the board before, the challenge is how the data are reported to the hospitals, or, excuse me, how the data are reported from the hospitals to the state. So the short answer is I don't have data on all hospitalized patients and their age because it's reported straight up to the state and it's not disaggregated. So there's, for some cases, we have information on age who are hospitalized, but not all hospitalized patients. I wish I could report that to you, and again, this is an issue statewide. So I think I'll, I'll pause there and maybe you can continue with questions, and then I'd be happy to come back on to show you the age range of all deaths. I have that readily available.
Thanks. And I, I know it's difficult to find this data, and we do ask this often, but if, if at any point we could ever figure out how many of our residents are in hospitals out of the county, I think that's really important, too, for us to be able to look at, at that impact that we're not seeing locally.
Supervisor Scott?
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your report today. My question, we're talking a lot about vaccines and masking, but we're not really talking about barriers. Should we be putting our barriers back up even though we are vaccinated and have masks on?
You know, I think the barriers help. Anything that prevents the transmission. The problem is, is that, you know, another part of this that's, the way the thinking has changed is this whole discussion about droplet versus airborne. So, you know, some of it is spread by the, the heavy droplets that go down quickly, and the barriers are really are good at preventing that spread. But, you know, now more understanding has come that there's an aerosol component of it as well. So the, the little tiny particles that sort of stay in the air and hover in the air for a while and can circulate around the air, the barriers don't necessarily prevent that. So the barriers are probably helpful, especially if you're in situations where people take their masks off for like, you know, if, I don't know, there's different situations where that occurs, or if, if there's not good compliance with the masking. The mask is preferable, the mask is better, it's like the face shields. The mask is better than the face shield because it can go out and go out into the air, whereas the mask prevents it. So, you know, I'm kind of hedging a little bit, but I think it's, it's not a bad idea to do that. If it's a huge effort, I'm not sure that it's maybe worth it. I think it's probably more worth it to, to work with the masking part of it.
If I may jump back in to share the, the data on deaths just really quickly. So I looked at these data last week, so this was before the last COVID death. So I'll start on the right because you asked about age range. So of the 65 COVID deaths among Lake County residents, 37% or 24 have been among people 80 years or older, 42% have been among people 65 to 79, and 15% people 50 to 64, and four deaths or 6% among people 18 to 49. So this is throughout the pandemic before we had the, the benefit of the vaccine. And we're, I'll draw your attention to this table on the left. So looked at it by type of living situation. We, you know, know that there was a lot of focus and attention on skilled nursing facilities because those are high, you know, high-risk settings, particularly before the vaccine. And 22% of deaths were in skilled nursing facilities. 6% are foreign residential facilities. And then three out of four deaths roughly, or seven out of 10, were in what I'm calling non-congregate settings. So people who are So people who are not living in one of these types of facilities. So I've called this before, community, community deaths. And of those 47, here you can see the zip codes in which those people lived throughout the county. About 34% or 16 lived in zip code 95422 and about 21% in zip code 95453. So that's the latest I have. We can certainly report next time we present more information on the more recent deaths.
Supervisor Scott, you had something more to add?
Nope.
Okay. Any other comment or questions from supervisors? So I do have a question and I guess it's a comment slash question slash request. I know that data is difficult to come by, but I think data is the most important thing that we can have in order to persuade the public on whether or not they want to get vaccinated. Using national numbers or statewide numbers does not always equate to what's happening specifically here locally. And if we have data to specify what's happening here locally, it has a higher potential impact on persuading people to change their behavior. If there's a outbreak in LA, people are less likely to want to mask up here. But if there's an outbreak here, they're more likely to want to mask up here. What's right here and there is going to make that risk assessment change the final decision. And so I think it's important that we know, I know we heard today that nine out of 10 that are hospitalized are unvaccinated. I would like to request that we really get the data of this latest situation. Because if we're looking all the way back to last April, last March, that was a vastly different situation than what we're in today. Today, we have tools, today we have a weapon to be able to combat the issue of the virus versus what it was at the beginning. And so to look at the aggregate is not a bad thing, but I think we also need to look at the last two or three months where we've had a large increase of vaccinated folks and seeing what that data looks like in comparison to before to really show that this is, and not really show, but show the data itself. And I'm assuming from what I know and from what I'm hearing constantly, that it will show that being vaccinated is a better situation for all of us due to the fact that it protects you from either severe illness or even getting ill in the first place and all the way to the point of death. And so if we can get to those numbers, I know that I'm reaching out directly to Adventist Health in order to capture those numbers rather than trying to go through some sort of state reporting system. That might be an easier way. So I would ask that you please use us because we do have contacts and connections within those hospitals. I know you do as well. But I know it's also added work in order to collect all this information and put it together for us. But I think it's important information and important data that we have the ability to provide and convey to the public as to what truly is happening since our drop off of people getting vaccinated. Right now, it's surging and you mentioned that. I just read an article in the Mercury News that we're the top county in the state of California for the increases of vaccination. I think it was a 48% increase day to day. People are making a risk assessment of the situation and deciding, okay, I need to go ahead and get vaccinated. So let's, I think we need to provide that data. And I know it's difficult, but let's work together to get that so that we can break those barriers that make it difficult right now to access that information. I'm sure the hospitals have it somewhere. It just might not be easily accessible through some reporting software.
Thank you Supervisor. If I may, just a quick response and I'll work with the team to seek out the hospital data. I do want to make really clear that, and perhaps we can show this next time we present, I've calculated the daily case rate among fully vaccinated Lake County residents and unvaccinated Lake County residents in the month of June. And the daily case rate among people who are unvaccinated is about six times higher than it is among fully vaccinated individuals. So again, that speaks only to risk of infection, but the risk is about six times higher or has been in the month of July in Lake County. And that is consistent with what we're seeing statewide. And perhaps we can bring back additional information to show that and help communicate that better. Thank you.
Correct. And I think you had that in the presentation last week. I think it was 541 total cases and only 68 of those. But I think the hospitalization and further issues and complications such as death is an important part of the conversation as well, not just the cases. And so I think if we can get that information, it would be a very valid point to make and help be more transparent with what truly is happening here locally. Supervisor Price, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, Sarah, that was for the month of July or the month of June?
Month of July.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any further comments from the board before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. If there's anybody in the board chambers that wish to speak on this item, please stand up. You have three minutes. And in the Zoom room, go ahead and raise your hand and we will get to you as soon as we have time. Or as soon as we're done here in the board chamber.
I'm Joan Moss, an independent journalist. I can hear better this week. Thank you. I want to share with you an article I found July 31st in the New York Times about a troubled vaccine company. And I know that we hear from the CDC, the WHO, and Dr. Pace and his staff. This is from the New York Times and from the government. I wanted you to read it. "We're told that all vaccines are safe and everybody's doing great." This is a contrary opinion and I just wanted to share it with you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone have comments in the boardroom on this item? And if you could just put it right there on the desk, that'd be perfect. If you could just put it right there on the desk, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Looks like we don't have any comments left in the board chambers. Let's go ahead and go to the Zoom room. First is Elaine Zacker. And again, you have three minutes and please let us know your name just in case I got it incorrect.
Yes, that is my name, Cilane Zacker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to speak about the PCR test because it is always mentioned as part of the public health presentations. And the data on the cases is always, well, it's probably based on the PCR test since that is the standard test for cases. I assume you all know how the PCR test works. That whether someone tests positive or negative depends on how many cycles of amplification are used for the test. Below about 25, pretty much everybody tests negative. 40 or over, pretty much everybody tests positive. So you can see the test is subject to manipulation. And I want to mention that there are a number of lawsuits alleging that the PCR test is a fraud. Reiner Fulmich, a consumer protection lawyer, is bringing a class action suit in Germany against government officials and PCR manufacturers. He has evidence that it is complete, the PCR test is completely unsuitable for detecting infection and that it's not even licensed or approved for diagnostic purposes. Reiner Fulmich also plans on filing a lawsuit in the US alleging that there is no Corona pandemic and there is only a PCR test pandemic. Also, Attorney Thomas Rentsch is filing a federal lawsuit in the US, in federal court, in a US court. He's filing it on behalf of a group of doctors, medical doctors. The defendant is Xavier Becerra, the Secretary of the US Department of Health and Human Services. The lawsuit is full of evidence and expert testimony dismantling the so-called emergency and the efficacy of the shots. The lawsuit alleges that the PCR tests have artificially increased the number of cases. The lawsuit notes that the manufacturer, the manufacturers of the PCR tests include a disclaimer that the FDA has not determined that the test is safer effective for the detection of SARS-CoV-2. Manufacturer inserts furnished with the PCR test.
Your three minutes are up. Please finish with your last comment.
Okay, manufacturer inserts furnished with the PCR tests include disclaimers stating that the PCR test should not be used to diagnose COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. It's funny how we're suing for PCR tests for COVID-19 even though they've been using PCR tests for previous conditions to test for, that that was never an issue. Let's move on to Ahava Rose.
Thank you. Yes, it's funny. Thank you. Yes, it's funny because we've also used things like Titer tests and what's the other one? There are other tests. There are other tests that are diagnostic and qualitative in fact that are not so much quantitative, or quantitative, that are not so much qualitative. Polymerase chain reaction can detect a genetic sequence, which we now know also that SARS-CoV-2 is only held in digital databases. There is no certified reference material sample. So how does comprehending viewpoints with zero funding from interested parties liken me to a bigot regarding your comment last week? My nonviolent lifestyle maybe means not relying on animal products like aborted fetal cells or maybe doing thorough enough research to know that the main component of NanoGel, an mRNA shot ingredient, is graphene oxide, a known electromagnetic toxic poison. Maybe it's because, Mr. Spatia, you knew I'd look into Dr. Charlie Evans of last week to find that the health officer you chose to follow has a one-star rating online that reads like a classic horror story. You may not have looked deeply into the Mountain Bears data or heard the Harvard study concluding that less than 1% of the adverse events are even reported. So maybe you don't feel for the victims who are turned away by their own doctors and hospitals who refuse to report their accidents, including tremors, seizures, transferred myelitis, blood clots and myocarditis, while insurance companies refuse to help them. Not to mention the pharmaceutical companies shirking liability for all harms since 1986 while making over $18 billion in the second quarter of this year alone. You may not know how much insurance companies pay the doctors for each completed round of injections, but as a legislative body, you all should know. California law states vocal emergencies can only be called at the introduction of an infectious disease and we are well over 17 months past this. California Penal Code 1483 states it's a crime to report a false emergency. The health officer is required by law to give you evidence, but thus far they've given you lies promoted by fraudulent qualitative testing for a digital sequence while there are physical certified reference materials available by BioCisto, a company purchasable from lab companies for every other microbe and contaminant known. Title 18 U.S. Code 1030-8 says it's a federal crime to provide false or misleading information relating to biological hazards or conducting focuses and is punishable by life in prison. Title 18 U.S. Code 1040 is a federal law against fraud in connection with the disaster or emergency benefits punishable by 30 years. And California Health and Safety Code 24171 declares individual rights to determine what's done with one's own body. And at that, California Health and Safety Code 24172 grants citizens the right to refuse medical experiments without duress, coercion, or influence. Government Code 1292Q clarifies religious rights to abstain from procedures conflicting with religious or spiritual beliefs. But not only that, the California Health and Safety Code 101080 requires a board of supervisors to proclaim the termination of a local emergency at the earliest possible date. Ms. Mariscos has given us the data that shows that 80% of these cases are over 65, 80% of the deaths, may I correct myself? So 66 deaths over 4,394 cases is 1.5%. 50 cases over 3,000 is 0.5% cases right now. You're not immune from the law. Was there a state of emergency when 26 people died of the flu in 2017? I don't want to put you on notice for violation of these codes, but I am done watching the puppets of Big Pharma's medical technology.
Your three minutes are up.
They're gaslighting you.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for your comment. Next, we have Kay Toy. If you could please give us your name.
Hi, this is Kathy Toy. I just, I had two questions actually for Dr. Pace. Dr. Pace, I wanted to make sure that I understood what you were saying. I heard you to say that the vaccinations are not slowing transmission. Is that what I heard you say? And I was wondering how that data was gathered, you know, to get that information.
If it's possible for you to finish your comment and then we'll go ahead and get you that answer.
Okay. And the other question was, a lot of us are wondering, when testing is done, does it actually reveal whether or not is the Delta variant? So those are my two questions. And thank you very much for the information that you've given us today, Dr. Pace.
Thank you for the questions, Dr. Pace, if you can answer those.
Hi. Yeah, so the first question is a really good one because this is new and this is kind of really evolving quickly. A couple of weeks ago, we were all thinking that it was much less transmissible amongst folks that were vaccinated. It's, there's about, a little less than two weeks ago, the CDC came out with their big kind of change in the masking guidance. And people were kind of confused as to what was going on. And there were, there's been a couple studies and there's been a couple kind of case studies that came out in the news at the end of, like basically last week, early last week or a little bit at the end of the week before, that was showing fairly widespread transmission amongst vaccinated people. So for example, there was a wedding where, or there was the issue in Provincetown where there was a big gathering in Provincetown. I think it was over 4th of July, Provincetown, Massachusetts. And they, they went and really kind of dissected this data and they found that, you know, a large percentage of the people were vaccinated already. So it's very much not widespread, kind of case controlled studies like we like to see, but sort of kind of spot testing and recognizing that, oh my goodness, this seems to be happening. We didn't think this was going to be happening and it's really starting to influence the way we're thinking. So it's still very early in the understanding of that. But if you go and look in some of the mainstream press over the last week or so, they're mentioning a lot about Provincetown. There's a couple of different studies that came out that really influenced the CDC's guidance and that. Your other, oh, the other question was about the Delta variant. The regular PCR testing does not determine what variant it is. The state is pulling certain samples, a certain percentage of samples from every region and then having to do the genomic sequencing. It takes a little while and we can also send specific samples that we're concerned about. Say there's an outbreak in someplace, we can send some samples there to see if it's the Delta variant. But, you know, it's well over 60% in the state now. Seems to be that it is the Delta variant and it's probably going to continue increasing because it's so much more contagious. So at this point, I think it's, we pretty much need to just assume that's what's going on.
Thank you for your response, Dr. Pace. Next is phone 1113. If you could please provide your name and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, this is Will Tuttle. I'm speaking out yet again on behalf of myself and thousands of other residents of Lake County. We respect their native health and intelligence. Enough to refuse these toxic vaccine and masking coercions and on behalf of children as well and future generations who are depending on us, do the right thing and protect our basic human rights to bodily autonomy, informed consent, and freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, and freedom of religion. It's becoming obvious that the whole COVID narrative is a huge fraud as we've been hearing and it's a crime against humanity that's being perpetrated through massive censorship of doctors, scientists, and journalists and through a continuous flood of fear-based lies and propaganda. Why do our elected officials refuse to uphold their oath to defend our constitutional rights? Why do you, our elected officials, unquestioningly support and encourage the harming and possible killing uninformed and misinformed people? What we are seeing now is the unraveling of the whole COVID fraud. Last week, the CDC openly admitted that the PCR test, its gold standard for determining COVID cases, cannot discriminate between COVID and the flu. So the whole foundation of this shameful charade is now laid bare for those with eyes to see. Those who refuse to see can rightly be called Nazis. Now this week, the CDC is telling us that, quote, "Universal masking is essential to reduce transmission of the Delta variant." This amounts to claiming that masks offer more protection vaccination. On top of this, the new CDC document says, quote, "New research suggests that individuals infected with Delta may be able to transmit the virus as easily as those who are unvaccinated." Studies in Singapore, Israel, and other countries show that 75% of the new COVID infections occur in people who are vaccinated. The CDC also reports that 74% of new COVID cases in Massachusetts are in fully vaccinated people. Even by its own data, the CDC's and big pharmas' push for people to be vaccinated makes no rational sense at all, except to increase vaccine profits and also to increase vaccine-caused deaths and injuries, which continue to skyrocket to unprecedented heights. Many of the world's top virologists and vaccinologists are now saying that the new COVID illnesses and variants are actually the illnesses and harms being caused by the vaccine. Dr. Robert Malone, the main inventor of the mRNA technology, is calling this the deadliest vaccine in history, quote, "A vaccinologist's worst nightmare," and his voice, like that of other leading experts, is being brutally censored by the pharma-controlled media. According to the Nuremberg Principles, also adopted by the United States, if local health and government officials blindly go along with the orders they are getting from superiors and insist on being Nazis, then this leads to the death and injury of many people. They are not just civilly, but also criminally liable for the harm they are causing. So in closing, I hereby request that you, our elected county officials, fulfill your civic obligations and require the county health department to research and report to you all the injuries and deaths occurring after and connected with these COVID injections. Lies and censorship go together, and the light of truth is the best medicine for all these illnesses. Thank you very much.
Your three minutes are up.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder about Dr. Pace's time.
Yes, I was looking at that, and we do have some more public comments, but just to let everyone know that some of the questions that might be directed towards Dr. Pace may need to be responded to in our next meeting in the following week when we have COVID-19 update again, as Dr. Pace does need to leave us possibly in a few minutes. So we'll see what we can do. Trying to replace myself on track here. Goodness gracious. Joseph Eckhart.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to be pretty brief because, you know, I don't know anybody here, and everybody previous to me were quite eloquent and seemed very prepared. But I like to just talk about jurisdiction and authority for all of this. Title 18 of Federal Code, Section 241 and 242, says that any color of law action can be criminally, you guys can be criminally held liable for color of law, like no legislature has passed any of this. You guys don't have any authority over I, a man, to conduct myself, my property, my DNA, my biological estate is mine and my other fellow human beings. Yeah, that's about it, because we can say medical facts all day to you while you look at your phone and dismiss everybody. It's not going to do anything. But I think federal codes are already in, in the books, you know? They're written for this reason. So we couldn't be forced to, be forced to go through medical procedures without consent, enter public accommodations before undergoing a medical intervention, like putting a mask on, blocking my God-given right to breathe the gas pressure that's provided for me. Yeah, that's about it. I think it's morally wrong.
Kat, thank you for your comment. Next is Erin McCarrick.
Hi, I'm not sure if my unmute worked. This is Erin McCarrick in Kherlik. I just wanted to give a thank you to Dr. Pace and the patience and the guidance and the leadership that he and all of the folks at the health department have provided over this past year. It's been rough, it's been unknown, they've been following the scientific method, the scientific process, to give us the best information that they can. So very much appreciate it. Best of luck in the next venture. And I got vaccinated, I feel great, and I hope everyone else does too, because they're, they're giving us some good science, and I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 6478.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Madeline, and I spoke a few times, and last time I was really a little shocked because I really demanded for some more time for, it's obviously we have two strains in our population. The ones who stand for masks and injections, and the other ones, it's a shot, it's not a vaccine, by the way, and the other ones who don't want all that. And so we only got three minutes, and we are the people who pay for the boards, for all, all the officials, and it's the board and the officials who have to serve us and hear us. And we're very much scientific, a lot of us and a lot of these doctors who know the truth, and they should be able to put the case widely in, for everybody to hear. So we have actually a choice to vaccine or not vaccine or taking the shot, like I said. So please, I like to urge, these aren't just bigots, like this was the answer last time, they're just bigots, the ones who are on the other side of you. So I think that's, that's very shocking, that's not scientific. Science always puts questions. It's a research, it's like in all directions, one has to research to find the truth. So please, give us more time, not just the three minutes and we have to rush 100 miles an hour to say what we like to say. So I thank you for hearing this, and I hope something will change. Very much hope so and urge. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and just a correction, I did not call people who don't want to vaccinate or mask bigots. I said having a non-scientific Google warrior placed with science to discuss this is like asking a bigot to be on a diversity committee. I did not say people are bigots for not getting vaccinated. It is a choice, I'm not quite sure why people believe that there's a mandate for these things. We are trying our best to protect people and provide the information that we are receiving and that we understand to be the truth of the science of COVID-19. We are not mandating any vaccination, so I'm not quite sure where the fear of your rights get into play here. You get your minutes for their freedom of speech, I am not interrupting, no matter how ridiculous some of these comments may seem to me, because you have that right to speak. So I, I don't understand some of the complaints that I'm hearing here, it just does not make any sense to me, and I'm going to stop before I say something that gets me in trouble.
Not to mention the actual really good comments, we unfortunately have to stop at three minutes. So it's not just the people that have things that we don't want to hear, it's people we do want to hear and want to add, but we cannot because the three minutes is something we have to abide by. And, and, you know, this, this whole ideal of facts, I mean, you can cherry pick all day, you can use Native American references, there's all sorts of acts I have here for Native American programs, if anybody wants to be a part of it, because they like to throw it out there about being Native American and free like they used to be. I wish some of these people were here in 1850 because, man, they needed someone to speak for them back then. So I just, I don't know, I'm sorry, Bruno, just had to add that.
No, you saved me. Any other, there's no more public comment, let's bring it back to the board, any final comments? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you just, just want to follow up with that. You know, obviously when this pandemic started, you know, there wasn't much information out there. So I really want to thank the board, the public health department, because that's what we're doing, trying to provide the information so you can make an educated guess. You've heard us all say in the public health department, if you have questions about your vaccine, please contact your provider and work through that process and get the information that you need. Each and every one of us as individuals can make that individual choice, and what we're attempting to do is provide this information as we move through the pandemic. We do know that the Delta variant is here, it is moving through our community in this country and the rest of the world, and we're going to continue to try and provide that information with an open mind coming at you with the information that we have. But ultimately, it is a individual decision, whether to get vaccinated or not. If you are going to make that decision, then, you know, I think each and every one on this board understands and supports individuals and their decisions. If that happens, we are asking then, please mask. If you could please mask in those situations to help protect others, that's what we're doing. We'll continue to ask that, we'll continue to provide the information. We are working towards hopefully more folks getting vaccinated if they choose to, but we're going to continue to provide the information. We have heard all types of points of view, and I think the chair and the board does a good job at this point to giving you those opportunities, and we'll continue moving along the path here. Ultimately, as, you know, from day one, protecting individual lives and individual family members and loved ones is always an individual decision, but we're going to give everybody the information that hopefully can be made in the right way. If you choose not to, once again, that is your individual right, and we'll continue this until we move past it. But as I said, for sure till the end of the year, we'll be dealing with this and, and much longer. So I want to thank everybody on both sides, and I know we're continually to grow, that you're going to hear folks that have a difference of opinion than myself. I made it very clear again, I did get vaccinated. You know, I felt like that was the choice to do for my personal situations and my family that is out there, so we'll continue down that path. That's really what I have to say today, and I will make it very clear, I am not a doctor. You know, I will not do that, I'll provide the information that is given, I will ask the questions, hopefully it'll help us move forward, but living this in a reality that it is. You know, not only do I have all the employees here that we manage as a board of supervisors, but also a business owner in this community, one of the largest business owners in the South Lake County. This is a reality, whether you're one side or the other, vaccinated, unvaccinated, this pandemic is real. You know, I've experienced it, I've seen it, I have family members that are long haulers that have been affected, you know, and I've seen it from both sides, vaccinated and unvaccinated. So I appreciate it in the beginning, didn't have that information and that hands-on effect, but now, 17 months later, seeing it and living it every day. So continue to provide the information and hopefully, you know, have an open line of communication. I understand we'll not agree with everyone, but we'll always be willing to listen, and I know this board does a good job of that, too. So those are my thoughts for today, and you'll hear that same message each week as we move through this process. And I hope that individuals not are, that are, that will not be affected by loss, because that is the worst thing. No matter what we do with politics, rules, government policy, whatever it is, the most important thing is family and friends in this world, and they're the ones being affected by this pandemic, and, you know, I hope no one experiences that loss. And I feel, you know, just for everybody, the 65 deaths that we've had in this county, believe me, for the rest of my life, that will be something that I take with me, that I was on this board when this pandemic happened, so do not take it lightly. That's it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Pyska.
I want to thank all of you for your comments, it's pretty much what I want to articulate as well. We're clearly in a dangerous place right now, and I'm worried about our people, I'm worried about our economy. We had three people die this month. That is real, and, and the stories of the people, maybe they need to be told right now. People that, in our community, you know, I didn't, I don't know who that one person in my zip code is who died, but if we started to connect the faces to these numbers and telling their stories, then maybe we wouldn't hear during these comments that this is not a reality, because this is real. The fear that people have for the vaccines is also real, and we can continue to have educated conversations, and you can go and have discussions with your doctor and your healthcare provider, and you can seek out that information. This is new, and it is scary, and we have to be able to listen to each other and listen to each other's fears and understand that. There are individuals that call in every single week, we as a board accept that they will likely never get vaccinated, and that is their choice, just as it was our choice to get vaccinated. But ultimately, we have to come together, and we have to work through this as a community. And it's very difficult when we have so much misinformation swirling around us. So I, I encourage people with COVID stories, their experiences, their long-haul conditions, the losses that they've had in their families, to come forward and really start to share that with our community so that we can, we can understand more than just the data.
Thank you for your comment. And with that, we will go ahead and close down item 7.5, and now let's go back to our standard timed items. We're going to start with our public input. This is for a public input on anything not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we will get to that public comment for those items. So 9:05 a.m., public input. If anybody in the boardroom has anything to express, please come to the microphone, and you have three minutes. And seeing none, let's go to the Zoom room again, anything not on the agenda. If you wish to raise your hand, dial *9 if you're on the phone, or press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. All right, we will go ahead and move on to our 9:06 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation commending Gordon Haggott, County Super, County Surveyor from Public Works. And I will go ahead and get this started. I want to see if we have Gordon online here, I saw his name earlier. Okay, just want to check in, Gordon, are you here with us? There you are. Perfect, glad that everything's working out. And then Director DeLeon also want to make sure that you're here with us before I get started.
Yes, good morning.
Perfect, good morning. All right, here we go. Proclamation commending Gordon Haggott, County Surveyor. Whereas Gordon Haggott has been a valued and respected employee of the County of Lake since July 31, 2006. Whereas Gordon Haggott began his career with Lake County as a deputy county surveyor. And whereas Gordon Haggott accepted the position of county surveyor on December 31, 2008. And whereas Gordon Haggott was awarded the County Engineers Association of California's Surveyor of the Year in 2016 for his tireless work on monument preservation. And whereas Gordon Haggott has been described as personable, genuine, a team player, a hard worker, and a good example for others to follow. And whereas Gordon Haggott has dedicated his career with Public Works to serving the public and is an excellent example of what a public servant is. And whereas Gordon Haggott has volunteered his time to various civic clubs, including the Anderson Marsh Interpretive Association. And whereas Gordon Haggott is not just a surveyor, but also a local farmer whose vegetables have won top honors in past Lake County fairs. And whereas Gordon Haggott will be deeply missed by his coworkers and the various departments and private surveyors he has assisted. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Gordon Haggott for his service to the County of Lake and to the citizens of Lake County, and extends our appreciation for his dedication and hard work, and wish him the best in the future. He will be greatly missed. Pass and adopted this Thursday, third day of August 2021. Gordon, thank you so much for your service. I believe that you wanted to say a few words, so I will let you go first before the supervisors bring in our comments.
All right, thank you Supervisor Sabatier, and I want to thank your board and Carol for being here today and everybody else that's, that's tuned in. Before I go too much further, I think I have to thank my wife, who has been patient with me for the last 15 years, has put up with some restless nights that I've had, and has understood when I'm sitting at the dinner table, staring out the window, and she says, Gordon, you're still at work, aren't you? And I had, I would have to admit that, yes, she's right. And I had, I would have to admit that, yes, she's right. But I have to say, I've truly enjoyed my 15 years with the county. And I couldn't have done it without the help of just a lot of people. I started my career under Steve Farr, who was the county surveyor back in 2006. And he's been a great mentor to me, even to this day, and helped me with a lot of problems and given me just a ton of advice. He introduced me to Bob Bridges, who was a deputy county council back when I first started. And Bob and I discussed several surveying and planning issues, and I had the benefit of his experience, as well as a lot of people in Department of Public Works and the planning department. So I guess if I have any advice for the newest members in county employment, it's to seek out people in your, in your office or your department that have some experience in what, in what you're doing, and try and tap into that. If you, if you don't, then I would suggest getting together with, with your staff and finding out which people have strong points in certain areas, and then try and share that knowledge. This mentorship was a great, a great advantage to me and gave a jumpstart to my career. I want to acknowledge our group of local and out-of-county land surveyors and civil engineers for their hard work in helping develop Lake County. Any development projects in the county always involves one or both of these folks. So it's, it's been a pleasure to, to work with them. I look forward to continuing our relationship even after I leave. I would like to thank all the staff in planning, water resources and admin for their help over the years, and all of the departments down on the second floor, especially the reporter assessor's office and the, the IT department. I know the IT department is going to miss me greatly, because I, I think I keep them as busy as anybody up here on the third floor. I also have to thank my DPW family. These are the people that I see and work with just about every day, and they are indeed a family. We've shared in success and failures, good times and not-so-good times, but we've always supported one another. And it's been just a great relationship. I have to thank Lori. She's kind of our, the hub of our office up here. She dispatches everything in Public Works and keeps us all informed. We have Alicia, Sylvia, and Lindsay, who take care of all of our accounting and help with the budgets. Celia was our right-of-way expert and also manages the airport. We have the fellows over in E&amp;I, John, Tim, Dave, Stephen Scott, who left here just a while ago, but were always a part of the E&amp;I team. The road crew, Jim, Chris, Ed, and Daniel, who always brought a sense of humor into the office, and not only kept our roads and bridges maintained. Chris at Central Garage for keeping all the equipment running, and Jim at painting signs for providing the signs on all our roads so Sheriff's Department and Fire Departments could find people. I also have to thank the people that manned the counters. Cherish and Rick and Alma, they're kind of the first line of defense for us. When members of the public come in, they usually take the initial hit before they give it to us. I want to thank, thank County Council, Lloyd and Kathy, and certainly Anita, who has calmed the waters for me with her expertise and guidance to where I could actually get some sleep at night. I always respected her logical approach to problem solving, and she always provided a clear path to a positive solution. She's had to suffer through a lot of my hand-wringing decisions, and I apologize for that, but I know she understands. Now for Scott. Scott has always supported the County Surveyor's Office and me. I think even if he disagreed with some of the decisions that we, we'd made here, he always had faith in my judgment, or at least I think so. If he really disagreed, he would tell me, and he would say, you might be overthinking this just a little bit, and he might suggest another idea. And I'd tell him, well, I, I'll think about it. I'm, I'm going to miss his positive attitude, his wit, and his great sense of humor, which, believe me, has helped keep us, all of us up here on the third floor going for the last 18 months. I'm also going to miss the Monday morning revival meetings, where we take a look at what's ahead of us for the week, and we usually get a exercise and a best day ever remark from Marina to kind of lift us up. Finally, I have to, I have to thank the lady that has been my survey technician ever since I've been the county surveyor, and that's Kara. We all know Kara. She is the one that's been responsible for keeping the County Surveyor's Office basically She keeps it organized, and she takes a ton of work off my plate so I can focus on other She's been responsible for addressing the public, taking phone calls and emails, all the map reviews, all, all of the cursory reviews that the County Surveyor's Office is responsible for. And she's just been a, a great person to work with. And I'm going to miss that. So anyway, that's about all I have. I just honestly, I could not have asked for a better group of people to work with, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gordon. Appreciate the heartfelt message to all of your colleagues and staff, and I'm sure that they all feel the exact same way. And seeing the reaction from Director Deleon, I, that's proof of it right there. I do want to offer a chance for Director Deleon, since he worked with you hand-in-hand throughout your 15 years, to give him a chance before we keep bringing it back to the board and then open it up for the public.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier. Yeah, you know, I've been the director here since 2010, and that's the most Gordon Haggott has ever said in, in the whole time I've been here. So that, that in and of itself should indicate how, how special today is. So I appreciate the opportunity, and you're recognizing him and, and his outstanding career. Excuse me. I just, I, I want to just take a couple of minutes. I don't want to take a lot of time here. You know, as the proclamation noted, Gordon is a bit of a Renaissance man. He's, he's been involved with the Anderson Marsh Group, you know, acclaimed grower of award-winning produce. He and his wife Linda are fixtures at the Lake County Fair. His career has taken him from the mountains in the North Coast, in the heyday of the logging wars, to private practice, and, and now concluding his career with a successful and impactful stint as, as the county surveyor here in Lake County. Lake County has a rich history of outdoorsmen. They learned to hunt and fish as youngsters, and they grew to know every inch of this county. They were a bit of an outlaw, some of them, but, but they all grew up appreciating the camaraderie and the bonds with friends and family that were forged in deer camps. And the second Saturday in August is, is a, is a holiday to them. And Gordon is one of those special Lake County outdoorsmen. You know, he talked about the things that, excuse me, that he's going to miss, and, and those, that's one of the things I'm going to miss is, are the stories and that connection to, to Lake County's history. He's continued a high standard, or continued the tradition of high standards for surveying in Lake County, and, and he's certainly going to be missed. And I know I speak on behalf of all the employees of Public Works when I say congratulations and enjoy well-deserved retirement. So thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Pyska.
I'll, I'll go first. Gordon, I, Gordon, I'm, I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance to work very closely together, though I have seen a lot of your work over the years. And I really, I wish you the best in retirement. I think we're going to be competitive at the fair going forward. You, you leave some very large shoes to fill, and I want to thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best in your years to come.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska. Yeah, you're going to have to up your game if you're going to compete with me at the fair. That's all I can tell you.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, Gordon, it's been an honor working with you ever since I was on the planning commission. And I remember a specific time when I was first appointed as the chair, or, and it was a very, you know, new experience for me. And we had a, an item, and I was actually trying to find it. But I know it was in District One, and I remember it was contention amongst the constituents and somewhat amongst us on the planning commission, and I think it was, I think it, you came in, I know you came in and you sat right here where Carol is, and you explained and gave some input, and it put everything to rest, and we were able to move on. So I, I, ever since then, I knew how, your value for the county, and I appreciate the work you've done, and I really appreciated you that day, because I didn't know I was going to control that meeting. So thank you, and good luck on your, and, you know, good luck on your retirement.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Scott.
Just want to thank you, Gordon, for your service here to Lake County. And I'll have to say, for the first time ever, I decided I was going to enter something into the fruits and vegetables for Lake County. So now I'm a little worried, because usually I stick to the baked goods, and I went outside my box. So we'll see how that works out with the three of us this year. And I also want to let you know that I had a constituent reach out to me last night to make sure I was aware how important you have been to this county for the progress and the projects. So it's, it's not just the county workers that are seeing the great work you have done, but the constituents here in the county making sure that we are aware of that. So thank you for your service and, and good luck on your retirement.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Simon.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Gordon, I would just like to say, you know, thank you for your service, and yeah, I wish you just great times on your retirement. In, in the five years I've been here, got to work on a few projects. EJ talked about probably one, but there was a, a fire rebuild after the valley fire in Anderson Springs, and it was early on, and my tenure is, you know, my first term. And, you know, I had to vacate a road out there. I had no idea what to do. And you said, you know what, I'll meet you out there in the field. You know, it just is, just another testament. There were some great words used there, you know, just honest, hard-working, and just, you know, a great person. So I get to see you at the Lower Lake Action Committee group meals down in Lower Lake. But there were just some great projects, rebuilding that home there and vacating that road for those folks in Anderson Springs. Wouldn't have got done without your help, and I know there are other folks in the department that helped get that done. That may have been the, the meeting that you guys were having, because there were some challenges with it. But I also want to just talk about a very important project that was done out just this last year, I think it was, time flies, but the renaming of the roads out in Jerusalem Valley. I know that was a project that was hanging out there for about 12 years, but that comes right down to just saving lives and response time. So I want to thank you for that. Those, you know, like I said, some of the main projects, did try and work with you to rename a hill, which I thought was pretty cool, and it wasn't successful, but I want to thank you for all that hard work. And as Tina said, you touched every project or development, it looks like, that happened in Lake County. And I just want to thank you for your service. And I just wanted to thank you also for your door always being open. Come in and ask a question, you know, you know, especially as a supervisor, you know, a lot of folks assume we know everything. We do not. We have great directors, professionals that work here at this county, from the admin all the way down to, you know, our, our housekeepers that do a great job for us. And we walk into those rooms with problems, and you guys do a great job of helping us solve those. And I just go back to, you know, a road that was vacated. It was supposed to be done since 1954, and you got it done just to help these folks rebuild their homes. So I just want to say thank you very much, and I hope you get a big deer this year if you're going hunting next weekend. So thank you very much, Gordon. And you'll never see me in no fruit-growing or vegetable-growing competition, but I would gladly eat the fruit, the vegetables that you cook. So, all right, thank you very much, Gordon. I just want to thank you for your service. So greatly appreciate it, and consider you, you know, a friend, because you've just, you've been that personable. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. I, I have to, I have, I can't kind of circle back on one thing. I can't take too much of the credit for the, for the addressing out in, out in Jerusalem grade. Kara and, and Mike Wink with Cal Fire and some of the residents all pretty much came together as a group to make that happen. And, and like I say, Kara, Kara did the bulk of the work there. But anyway, I appreciate your, your comments, and I'll tell you what, I'll bring, I'm going to bring vegetables up to the third floor after I retire, and I'll circle down onto the first floor and bring you some.
Thank you.
So it didn't say on your proclamation that you were humble. That comment right there, I, I, I think explicitly summarizes who you are. You have such a deep, rich history, not just in your knowledge of the area, but also your, your family has been here for generations. And I still feel that I'm a newcomer to Lake County. I feel very fortunate to be in the position that I am currently. But you are the most approachable, welcoming, and kind person. Each and every single time, there's a smile, there's a hello, there's a, a very approachable comment, and I just couldn't appreciate that more. The fact that we have mutual friends has increased our relationship and enhanced it as well, and I've come to know you, and I appreciate the work that you have done for the county. Whether or not you want to admit it, your finger has been in the projects somewhere, somehow, to a certain degree, and every development has your name on it. And that is appreciated, because that is what makes us propel Lake County into the future. I, I wish you the best. I know you're not going anywhere. You're still going to be, be right here in Lake County. I think this is your home to be. And so I, I know that this will not be the last that we see one another. One of the projects that I know you and I worked on, I actually feel sorry about. It was so much more difficult than I thought it would ever be, and that was the bus depot over in Clear Lake. Splitting up that property, I thought was just going to be a simple affair, and it, it took a lot more work than it, than I thought was necessary. But I don't know the rules. You and Anita worked hard on that and eventually figured it out and made it work, and I appreciate that. There are many people behind the curtain that make things happen, and you are definitely a wizard behind the curtain, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. And 15 years, we talk so much about the struggles of retention. You are a prime example of somebody who has put their loyalty and their heart into the County of Lake to better the lives of the people of Lake County, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Appreciate it.
So we have a comment from Anita Grant.
You didn't think for a second you were getting out of here without me commenting, did you? To me, Gordon's just the epitome of tough act to follow. And what Supervisor Sabatier said about the transit hub, Gordon worked tirelessly, but I can tell you that there has been no significant exchange of property, sale or purchase of property involving the county where Gordon did not have to untangle something. And the fact he does it like a detective, he gets a lead, he follows through, he's just amazing in how he handles it. And then Gordon steps back and takes no credit for anything. And you could see today, he's been very gracious, thanking everyone, very quiet about his many accomplishments. So, Gordon, we're all going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Anita. I appreciate that. We'll be in touch.
I want to make sure I give staff a chance if they wish to speak right now versus opening it up for the public. Raise your hand or just start speaking.
Chair Sabatier, I'm going to just jump in before you take any other comment, and I've neglected to share something. This is kind of a tradition that we have up here in Public Works, and it's unfortunate that we're all in separate rooms. It would have been an honor to present this to Gordon in front of all of you and his peers. But I'll do it remotely, and that is, and I'll try to hold this up. This is a sign congratulating Gordon on his retirement, and so I'll be presenting that to him here personally, but I wanted to share that with everyone that we've got this nice sign for him. Again, kind of tradition here in Public Works. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
It's the Public Works Gold Watch.
Better than that.
Nice. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Lars, Lars Ewing, Director Ewing.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Gordon, I had the pleasure, and I was really lucky enough to work kind of kitty-corner to Gordon for, I'd say about half of his time with the county from 2010 to 2016 or so. You know, I always looked forward to, since then, any of my questions that had to do with surveying because it meant I got to talk to Gordon again, and I was, I really missed it when I left there. But one quick story that sticks out to me, I came in one day and I was kind of sharing some frustrations with Gordon about my sons who were, I have four of them, they were fighting, and, you know, Gordon, in his calm and just kind of grandfatherly way, told me about how he and either his brothers or cousins, you know, how they used to fight when they were kids, and it involved going down to the basement with a gun and shooting each other. And I don't recall if it was a BB gun or not, I presume it probably was, but that really helped to kind of put things in perspective for me. So, I was able to go home and, you know, go about my day with a little bit more confidence that things are probably okay. So, I really will miss, you know, that, along with, to be honest, his surveying expertise. I mean, when I was able to talk to Gordon, I would call him with many questions, and usually they were probably, you know, frequent, very basic about surveying, and to be honest, probably very repetitive. And he was patient with my ignorance, and I've learned quite a lot from him, and I really, you know, that is something that has been probably, I shouldn't say understated, but he really does know his trade, and I think that can't be overstated. So, Gordon, I miss you, you know, certainly the humble spirit that was talked about, but I'll say the grandfatherly nature. That's an odd way of saying it, but I really think that kind of sums you up from my perspective. So, Gordon, we'll see you around, and whether it's vegetables or guns or whatever, but I couldn't be happier to have worked with you over the years.
Thanks, Lars. And it was BB guns that if you want to advise the boys about maybe taking that a step further, we had other things that we did to press the envelope.
All right, I'll keep you away from my boys. All right, thanks, Gordon.
There's a disclaimer in this meeting, I believe. I'm not quite sure where to start, but there's a disclaimer in there somewhere. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, whatever.
Oh, please, come on up to the microphone. Sorry, I was looking at Zoom.
I know. Thank you, Maria Turner. I just wanted to say thank you to Gordon. I was just a baby planner when you started with the county, and I know I was pesky with questions because there's a lot to learn. And I just really appreciate the time, the expertise, the professionalism, and the willingness to invest your knowledge and to share your knowledge with pesky baby planners. I know that every bit that you helped me, and not just me, but when you multiply it with all the planners who are there now or have been there during your tenure, every little bit that you gave us was helpful. And when you help us do our jobs better, it just means that we have a better product for the public. And so, thank you, because in the years that you have been here, there are a number of planners, both still in Lake County and who have gone on to other jobs, that we are all doing a much better job for the public because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments in the boardroom? Please, come on up.
I'm not going to repeat all of the accolades and everything that Gordon was very, very much deserving of. I just wanted to offer my congratulations in person. Gordon was a godsend to me when he started at the county in 2006. Has been a tremendous asset to the county. It sure is shoes that will be absolutely impossible to fill. Been tremendous support for me, too, as I did a little private practice after retiring from the county. So, just wanted to personally offer my congratulations, Gordon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Any further comment in the boardroom on this item? Any comment in the Zoom room? We have one hand that popped up. Betsy Khan.
And Gordon, I want to personally thank you as one of those members of the public who was helped by you and Kara and everybody in Public Works, but you especially, with your kindness and your patience, gave me some incredibly critical help, and I cannot thank you enough. Yeah, I just have a wonderful life.
Thank you, Betsy. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the comment, and that looks to be done with on the Zoom room, and so we'll go ahead and bring you back to the board. Gordon, again, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service to Lake County, and best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then let's go ahead and move on to item 6.3 or 9:10 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation recognizing the retirement of Carolyn Cook White, Health Program Support Specialist, and honoring her many years of outstanding service to the County of Lake. And Director Pomeroy, kind of choked there a little bit, Director Pomeroy is here to read the proclamation today.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier. I don't see Carolyn in the Zoom room, but she may be there in person, so.
She is right here.
She's right there. Thank you. Hi, Carolyn. So, I'm going to.
She will come up to the podium at one point or another.
So, the proclamation recognizing the retirement of Carolyn Cook White, Health Program Support Specialist, and honoring her many years of outstanding service to the County of Lake. Whereas Carolyn Cook White, Health Program Specialist II, has been employed by Lake County Health Services for 27 years, beginning as a public health aide in December 1993. Whereas Carolyn Cook White has worked in many different capacities at Lake County Health Services, most recently in the AIDS Drug Assistance Program, California Children's Services Program, and in our COVID-19 pandemic response. Whereas Carolyn Cook White was an integral part of multiple programs furnished by Lake County Health Services, including the preventative healthcare for the aging programs and HIV/AIDS Surveillance Program. Whereas Carolyn Cook White was also a licensed botanist and used this skill during clinical and outreach events throughout her tenure with Lake County Health Services. Whereas Carolyn Cook White supported clinical services provided by Lake County Health Services over her many years of employment. This included HIV/AIDS testing, PHCA, women's health, vaccinations, directly observed therapy or DOT, STD clinics, and California Children's Services Program, and the medical therapy unit. She was the eligibility expert in the Family PAC program, Every Woman Counts program, and the cancer treatment programs. Whereas Carolyn Cook White's professional and kind demeanor towards clients and staff alike assert the residents of Lake County in accordance with the mission and purpose of Lake County Health Services. Whereas Carolyn Cook White's extensive department knowledge, expertise, tremendous attitude, sense of humor, and heartfelt laugh will be greatly missed. Whereas Carolyn Cook White has dedicated the past three decades to Lake County Health Services and is selfless and artistic, altruistic manner, sorry, whereas the entire staff at Lake County Health Services hereby extends their sincere appreciation for Carolyn's decades of long service, and we wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement, passed and adopted this day of October 3rd, 2021. And with addition to that, I just want to say what a delight this person is. She is such a kind-hearted person. She's so knowledgeable of our department, and she's going to be so greatly missed. We really do appreciate you, Carolyn, and we wish you all the best in your retirement.[1321.13][1321.13][applause]
Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service.
I'm going to miss everybody, too.
Would you like to say some words?
No.
You don't, but you probably do.
Not really. I'm going to be, I've got to go back to work.
It's up to you.
Just, no, just told me, said thank you.
We're not quite done.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, we have a hand up in the Zoom room. Mr. Chair, we have a hand up in the Zoom room before people leave.
So, let's go ahead and start with her colleagues, and we do have Carolyn Holiday here to say some words, if we can unmute.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me a quick moment to speak. As you can tell, Carolyn Cook is a woman of few words, but she is a woman of significant action and kindness. I've had the opportunity to work with her for almost 10 years, and she is actually the reason and the impetus that I applied at the Health Department in the first place. She is an exemplary employee and definitely encompasses all of the various characteristics that anyone could hope for in any employee for the County of Lake, and I just want to say how much she'll be missed. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you so much. And I just, I'll keep it brief. I just promised Carolyn we will keep it brief. We seem to have quite the humble staff who just want to get back to work and finish their day, which absolutely is appreciated. But 27 years, let's not belittle the fact that 27 years of your life has been dedicated to the health of Lake County population, the people that live here in Lake County. That is one of our greatest needs, is some of the work that you have been doing in the past 27 years. These special programs are exactly what some people needed to enjoy their quality of life to live longer and better. And can't say how much I appreciate, or can't say enough of how much I appreciate the fact that you've dedicated yourself to people you may never have met before, people that just needed to get the help and provide the programs that you worked on. COVID-19 is another one. I think the large majority of the Public Health Department has pulled together to do things that were not even seemed possible even on paper before. We are a robust team that came through when we needed them, and I want to say that we absolutely appreciate your dedication to Lake County and to the health of the people that live here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Scott?
You know, there's not much more I can add to that. Yes, definitely, thank you for 27 years of serving the public here, and for me, that's the most important, the people. The people here in Lake County, that's who you've been serving. So, thank you for making lives better for the people here living in Lake County.
Supervisor Pyska?
And serving the people in Lake County means our friends and our neighbors and our family, as so many of us have grown up here. So, I want to thank you for those 27 years, and I know this last year and a half was really difficult, and you probably could use some rest and relaxation, and so I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you for your service and hard work. It seems to me that you're not finished with something else you're going to be doing in retirement. Given the way you said I need to go back to work, I think you'll find something to do, and whatever that is, I hope you enjoy it.
I'm going to become a professional lady.
Yeah, just want to follow up, Carolyn. Thank you very much for your service, and you look through the programs that you worked with, the most vulnerable people in our communities, and probably the toughest times in their lives and some of the stuff. So, it's, you know, just want to thank you for that and your dedication. 27 years is a whole lot of time and a lot of people's lives that you've touched. So, thank you, and as I said early, family is the most important thing, so I hope you enjoy that new job of those, of the babysitting that you're going into. So, thank you very much for your time here for Lake County and its constituents.
Thank you, everybody.
Any further comments from the Zoom room or the boardroom? Yeah, oh, please, please.
You're not going to waste all your time.
This is your, this is your last chance.
Yes, my last chance. I have had the pleasure of working with Carolyn for the past six years as I've contracted as a physical therapist for the program for medical therapy program for children here through California Children's Services, and she has been amazing, just amazing. We run a clinic in Lower Lake that services, gives services for about 43 children in Lake County and their families, and she knows every single one by name, every family member, grandparent, aunt, uncle, cousin. She knows everybody, and she has been such a support to these families, helping, you know, the children as they come to therapy, or even just making sure that they're getting their wheelchairs, their walkers, anything. She's followed up on the durable medical equipment that they've needed, any specialist visits, going out to San Francisco. I mean, she's been absolutely amazing, and I just don't know, you know, it's going to be very hard, very hard to fill those shoes, but, I mean, your kindness and hard work has been amazing. I mean, just even to the point of taking care of our physical, you know, actual clinic and making sure that it was clean when, you know, things have lapsed, or making, renting a carpet cleaner and cleaning the floors, or doing anything and everything that is needed to be done. And I just so appreciate you. You have become one of my dearest friends, and I'm going to miss you when you move to Oklahoma and take care of your grandbabies, but they are very blessed to have you, and I just want to thank you. So, you guys. And I am Trina Meyer.
Thank you. Any further comments in the boardroom? And the Zoom room? All right. Again, congratulations on your retirement and best of luck. All right, we are going. All right, we are going to move on to item. Well, we'll do the extras after we finish the time. So my goal was to finish 6.4, take a break, and then take up the extra items. And so let's go ahead and take up 6.4, continue from July 20th, 2021, 10:00 AM, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code to include further requirements for exemptions from competitive bidding and requirements forbid protests. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it's off. There is. So, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm having a microphone problem. So Stephen Carter is here and will present this.
Okay.
My microphone says it's off, but it's on, so. Stephen? I see Stephen in the panelists. Bruno, can you say?
At this moment, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Let's make sure, oh, I re-nag on that last comment. It looks like we're ready to roll. Mr. Carter.
Sorry about that. I was helping someone with the front desk. So I'm assuming we're on the purchasing ordinance?
Yes. Yes, 6.4.
Good morning, Board. Good to see you this morning. Based on your direction received by staff on the board meeting July 20th, 2021, staff is submitting this ordinance for a second time, so this is a first reading. So now I'll just go into the changes requested for the purchasing ordinance. The first thing I wanted to say was that there is one change that I'm reversing. So on page 1, under Section 2-34, it's 34.1B, where I was requesting to change districts to exclude the apostrophe. After a conversation with the supervisor, I'd like to keep the apostrophe, so basically undo that change. Moving on to the first real change of the ordinance, if you move to page 5, Section 2-38, 38.1, extensions of annual agreements, requesting the Consumer Price Index to change from United States City Average to San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward, so it's which CPI you utilize. We sent out information related to that quite a few years ago, and it just, our county uses San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward. So it just hasn't been updated yet within the ordinance. Moving on to 38.2, where the next change comes in, it's exemptions to the, to the purchasing procedures. 38.2.1, a state of emergency. I went over this last time, but since this is a first reading again, I'll go through all the changes. Presenting to add A, an emergency purchase is a purchase made in response to an emergency as defined in Section 34.1K herein. So basically, to define what a state of emergency is, within the ordinance, there is already sections that will help provide guidance. And B refers to Section 42.1 and 42.2, which provides further guidance. Now, number 2, under 38.2, the new nature of goods or services precludes competitive bidding. This is a brand-new A, which during our last, the last board meeting, this was brought up. We were moved to the A and B and were requested to add some language. So the new language would be use of this criterion requires documentation demonstrating both why the goods or services contracted are unique and why competitive bidding is precluded. Appropriate documentation shall be attached to the memorandum to the Board of Supervisors at the time the item is submitted for consideration of agenda placement. And then number 3, a determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county. Requesting to have A, the cost of supplies, materials, equipment, or contractual services would not offer a large variation in the overall cost. The possibility of completing the competitive bidding process for new supplies, materials, equipment, or contractual services would offset any potential savings. Now, with B and C is where, again, your board requested a change from the initial proposal. B, competitive bidding shall be required every three years. Previously, it was non-existent, but the prior proposal was five. And C, extensions during the three-year period shall not require competitive bidding. The next substantial change is found in Section 2-40, 40.3B, found on page 8. That's where your board requested the change in the 10% maximum for local bidder preference. It was, has been changed, requested to be changed from $2,500 to $5,000 as the max of the 10% can reach. And that is related to informal solicitations and evaluations, so that's anything under $50,000 that you go out to bid for or RFP. For soliciting and awarding formal bids, which is $50,000 and above, Section 2-41, found on page 10, 41.3B, the local vendor preference, the 10% maximum preference, is changed from $10,000 to $20,000. So that provides a larger percentage gap for local vendor preference. And then moving on, the next, I'm scrolling down, sorry. The next change would be Section 2-46, which is bid protests. So to clarify, within the Section 46.1E, when you can file an actual protest, felt like it needed clarification and possible elongating the timeframe allowed. So the new wording would be be filed no later than seven days after the date of the notice of intent to award letter and/or a formal bid opening. Holliday has accepted. Any protests filed after this will not be considered. It previously was only 72 hours, so it provides enough timeframe for bidders to protest as well as for the county to respond. Section 46.3, on page 14, it would only refer to the purchasing agent. Well, all of our department heads are assistant purchasing, assistant purchasing agents. I can't speak right now, sorry. So the additional verbiage of or assistant purchasing agent has been added to clarify and provide that. Other than that, everything else is grammatical changes, mostly pronouns, to bring them up to nowadays way of speaking, I'll say. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Anything further from admin? Okay. Anything from Board of Supervisors? All right, appreciate you taking all of our feedback from the previous conversation. Looks to me like everything was added in there, and it looks very complete and exactly what we asked for. This is, I appreciate the work that's been put into this. I know this has been discussed for quite a while about updating this, and I definitely appreciate it. This is our first reading, and then hopefully we'll have the second reading next week. Let's go ahead and open that up for the public. Any public comments on this item, both in the Zoom room and in the board chambers? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
I'll offer the ordinance. Or do I have to wave?
I'm sorry, if I could, the first action, and Supervisor Crandall, I couldn't.
Your microphone is not on.
Oh, sorry.
It's on.
We just need, there you go. Now it's live.
It was the same place. I didn't move the switch. Anyway, the first action is a motion to waive.
Pull it up, Anita. He's not here. Sam is not picking you up.
The first motion is to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only. Following that, if that motion is successful, there'll be a second motion to advance the ordinance for a second read. You have a five-day minimum, so that could be next week if your board chooses to put it on the agenda for next Tuesday.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'll motion to waive the reading of the ordinance and read in title only.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Crandall, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
And Mr. Chair.
And hold on, and the title is "An Ordinance Amending Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code to Include Further Requirements for Exemptions from Competitive Bidding and Requirements Forbid Protests."
And finally, Mr. Chair, the motion to advance should reflect that the amendments that were discussed today on the face of the document are included.
The apostrophe.
So I motion to advance to a second reading with the amendments and additions and corrections that were referred to in the presentation.
And do we need to give a specific time, or?
You need to give a specific date.
Okay.
The next week.
8:10.
8:10, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please, and thank you very much, Ms. Grant, for helping.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that, we are going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 11:13. Apologize for making everyone wait so much longer. Let's go ahead and reconvene. We were done with item 6.4. I think it's time to speak on item 4.1. First, we need to go through the process of approving it as an extra item, and so Supervisor Pyska, if you'd like to introduce the reasons for why this should be added as a extra item.
Sure. The numbers are showing us that our county is experiencing exponential growth with COVID-19 and the Delta variant, and it's time, I believe, to discuss bringing back masking to our county facilities to ensure that our workplaces are safe for both the staff and the public. And it's appropriate to have that conversation now that we've had our latest COVID update.
Okay, and so you needed to have this on the agenda because you wanted to take action prior to the next posting of the next agenda?
Correct.
Just wanted to kind of highlight the.
The urgency.
One of the reasons for an extra item.
Yes.
Okay, and is that a motion?
I make the motion. To take the matter up as an extra item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Pyska and a second from Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're going to go ahead and just start conversation on 4.1, and then we'll go ahead and cover 4.2 afterwards. So let's go ahead and open it up on the urgency ordinance.
So we're seeing businesses all over the county choose to move back to requiring masking indoors for the safety of their staff and their customers. They care deeply about those who work for them and who visit them, and the county of Lake is one of the largest employers, and it's time for us to make the difficult decision to return back to masking at our facilities, just as the courts have done on the fourth floor. We are experiencing outbreaks, too, in this building and in our other buildings. We have staff out recovering and quarantining as well. We care deeply about the well-being of our employees and the public who interface with them. We also have a lot of work to do, and we can't risk our productivity after we've lost so much over the past year and a half. Going back to requiring masks in our facilities means that everyone inside county buildings will need to wear a mask, and if you're not able to, our staff will gladly make accommodations so that you can continue to carry out your business. To be clear, this is a temporary Band-Aid fix until more of our county can become vaccinated and we can begin to move out of this pandemic together. We've done this before, and we can do this again. And I did ask CAO Hutchinson to reach out to our department heads and our labor representatives to get an understanding of what they feel they would like to move forward safely. So I was wondering if she could speak to that.
So I did do a quick email poll of department heads. You have 22 department heads, including me. 18 of the department heads responded to my poll, where I was just basically asking, would you be supportive of an urgency ordinance that reinstated masking for all persons entering county facilities regardless of their vaccination status? Of the 18 responding, 17 said yes, and the 18th person expressed that they felt that people should still have choice, but also indicated that they would wholeheartedly support it if the board chooses to take action on the urgency ordinance. As far as labor groups, Pam Samick contacted the president of the union of our largest employee group, and she advised that she is in complete support of having masking as a way to protect our employees.
That's what I've got to present, and, you know, I think we're seeing a lot happening in the free market. We've learned a lot over the past year and a half, and we're seeing businesses making the choices to do what they need to do to protect their businesses and their productivity and their staff. And it's our obligation to provide a safe work environment for our staff and the public who interface with them.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Just a comment on that. I know our constituents and our public are very concerned about the fact that we go back and forth from masking to unmasking now to masking again, and I just think we need to learn to pivot and to make sure that we're moving along with the science. And right now, the science is saying that we need to be masking, so I definitely support this ordinance moving forward.
So I do have some comments on this. I'll start out with the more easier-to-digest comment. What are the triggers? We are instating, reinstating masking for our facilities, not for the county as a whole. But what is the trigger that gets rid of this? And then maybe even creating a trigger that puts it back on. That way, there's no, I feel like randomly bringing this because this is how I feel about it. It's more based on a predictable situation of if we reach 40 cases per 100,000, if we reach 20 cases per 100,000, what is, I think we need to create triggers to make this easier to understand that we're nearing this situation rather than, it just, there's no rhyme or reason right now, and I think we can create a rhyme or reason by creating those triggers. Whether we choose to use some of the triggers that were within the tiered system that was in existence or not, but there's no trigger for when this is going to go away, and there's no trigger for when this should come into effect. And I think that those would be two useful triggers for everyone to understand what is coming up and when change will occur, rather than waiting for change to occur and maybe not being happy with no change or not being happy with the change. So just wondering if that's something that could be discussed and implemented, or looked at for a new iteration or a new version of it, maybe approving this today and then coming back with those triggers. But I think that triggers are useful to have predictability of what we're intending to do.
Yep, and I agree with that. This is a reaction, certainly. It's not that I feel this is something that we should do. It's, the numbers are telling us this is what we need to do, and we're seeing it throughout our community with the businesses. We did not expect to be in this situation, so we didn't develop. expect to be in this situation, so we didn't develop a trigger system. But now, we've learned that this is something that we're going to be living with potentially for an extended period of time. And so, it does make sense to develop triggers. You know, we don't need to reinstate this, you know, through the rest of our declared emergency. That doesn't make sense either. So, if we can pass this today and then come back with some triggers, I don't know that we are the ones that should come up with those triggers, but we should definitely speak with our experts to help us figure out where those baselines will be.
And I think that unless we're speaking directly to those that are making public health decisions, either at the national or state level, those triggers were created for us. And I think we can easily carbon copy. For instance, we use that once we go into orange, we're going to come back into meetings. And I think that we can still utilize some of those things. And I don't, I agree that face masks help. Just like before, face masks, everybody thought it was the respectful thing to put your hand in front of your face, or your arm, probably better your arm, in front of your face when you sneeze, when you cough, in order to slow down the spread of whatever it was that you were expelling out of your nasal area. And so, masks work. To a certain point, where it's the behavior that changes. Because we had mask mandates before December, and then we shot up through the roof, and we had mask mandates when it came back down. I think it really comes down to personal behaviors and choosing to be safe and choosing to act correctly. I believe Supervisor Simon said it the other day. If you're vaccinated, then you're better protected. If you're not vaccinated, please do your best to distance from people and to wear a mask and to try to make the environment as safe as possible, too. I think it's, all behaviors need to be looked at, and we need to take personal responsibility. This is still spreading in our community. I personally have struggled with this, but at the same time, and when I say this, I mean this ordinance, but at the same time, doing nothing is not exactly a good way to hope for change. And our employees are our responsibility, and we need to make sure to provide them the safest of environments for them to work in and not force them to have to deal with uncomfortable and possibly unsafe situations. So, but I would love to see those triggers, because I think predictability and better understanding of what and when things will change is good. And so, I hope that we can bring those to the board possibly next week, just so that we have something in writing as to when things will change again.
Yes. And to speak to the behaviors, we can't control people's behaviors, and we certainly can't control them outside of the workplace. But when you come into the workplace, you could be putting your coworkers in a situation that's risky. And so, this is where we just need to provide that, ensure that that workplace safety takes precedent. You know, people are going to behave in the way that they're going to behave, but you shouldn't be able to put your coworkers at risk.
And I think this is bigger than just coworkers. This is also the public coming in. And we want to make sure that the public is safe. We want to make sure our staff is safe from the public and each other. And so, it's all around. I think the next, the 4.2 item, if it's taken up, that's more related to coworkers. This one is related to the global understanding of it's an extra added measure during a time where we know that the infection is high. So. Any further comments? Supervisor Simon?
You know, following up, this is a tough discussion, but as we know, the pandemic is ongoing. My support today for this ordinance, which I plan on supporting, is really to address and to really help our emergency rooms in our hospitals. As we all know, you know, the capacity levels are being very close to be reached, and I know we were at capacity here recently. So, when you talk about triggers, I really believe, we have learned a lot. And I believe that the emergency rooms and their capacity could be a trigger for that, depending on the days and the times, whether it's 30 days, it has to be, you know, 30 or 45 days or whatever, that they're not overwhelmed. But, you know, I really go back, you know, we all know that once our rooms are filled here, we've got to fly folks out. I know that was happening recently. But if this continues throughout the region, there won't be any place to send anybody. So, really addressing the ER stresses that are happening, both for Sutter and Adventist, I think it's, you know, the right action to take at this time. So, that's my thoughts on the ordinance.
Any further comments before we open it up for the public? All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anybody in the boardroom wish to speak?
Yeah, my hands up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So, if you look at Section 2 of the ordinance, it does have a sort of a trigger, I guess I would say, in terms of when this safety practice would end. What it states is that this safety practice must be observed while the present COVID-19 state of emergency continues to exist or until otherwise ordered by the Board of Supervisors. The concern that we have about until the present COVID state of emergency continues to exist is, as we all know, these things go on a long time. They can. Some of the fire states of emergency have gone on for years while final things were happening through FEMA. But the other trigger there is until otherwise ordered by your board. So, it goes away at the point at which you decide it goes away. And I hear what you're saying. It sounds like you want more specific criteria on what those, what would lead to that decision. And that's certainly doable. But the board can pull the plug anytime it believes it should.
Correct. I see those, and I agree with the issue of the state of emergency. We've been in a state of emergency for 18 months. And I just think that a trigger that can be understood by the public, rather than on a whim when a board supervisor decides to bring this back for discussion, is completely different and a better way to prepare us for the change, rather than waiting for a board supervisor to bring us change if we're down to two cases per 100,000. I think it just needs to be in writing when that change will happen and not just when we decide that we want it to happen.
And I think we would look to the Public Health Department to help.
Absolutely.
Fine-tune that. They're not in the Zoom at this moment, but we can certainly work with them and bring back clarification.
Sheriff Martin, apologize.
Thank you. I was one of the department heads that responded, and I responded with a qualified yes. And a lot of the concerns that I had are being discussed here. And that has to do with how long does this go? I mean, as the CIO said, we have emergencies that go on for years and years and years. You also run into the situation, if we don't have something codified in there when this goes into effect or when this goes out of effect, you run into the potential situation of requiring masking for members of the public when it's completely unnecessary. So, I definitely support this with those provisions in there. If something happens on a Tuesday evening where our case numbers get low, and then you have a week of no board meeting for whatever, a fifth Friday in the month, you're going to have people masking basically unnecessarily for an extra two weeks. And while I think the masks are a good idea, I support that. But I know that feeling is certainly not held by everybody, and we represent everybody during this. I haven't seen the ordinance, so I understand we're voting on it today. I haven't had a chance to review it. Hopefully, the board has. But is that available somewhere publicly?
Yeah, it's attached to the agenda.
Online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In fact, is it possible for us to share it on the big board?
Yes.
It's a very small ordinance, very succinct.
Matthew?
And so, we should be able to?
Can you put it up? It might take him a minute, though, if the sheriff has additional comments.
And then the last comment I had was, everybody has their own opinions, but realistically, the health experts should probably be the ones that are doing this. So, I would really like to see something in there along the lines of the health officer. Maybe the health officer has the authority to remove these requirements at any point that that person deems necessary. And I also haven't seen, forgive me for not checking this, I didn't realize this is available online. Obviously, there's going to be enforcement component of it as well. As before, that's going to prove challenging for my department, so hopefully there's provisions in there for other public officers to be able to enforce this as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. If there's any way we can blow that up a little bit, and I think Section 2 is really the section that has the meat.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The only thing I would say is certainly when you're talking about having public health involved in helping you develop criteria and even offer their opinion on these things, this particular ordinance is limited to county facilities and well within your board's authority to control, just dependent upon your assessment of the circumstances, as you use your police powers to review circumstances of public health, safety, and welfare. So, yes, the additional information is very helpful, but it needn't be a public health order in this case because you're controlling only the facilities that the county operates and/or owns, and that's within your authority. The only other thing I would say about a trigger is that some care should be taken to determine that you have a trigger that's going to make the difference for you, because you could resolve one problem and have another problem, and you'd automatically remove the masking when another set of circumstances might justify keeping it. So, you'll have to think about how you want to do that, and also the timeframe for turnaround. Sometimes, information comes at 7 o'clock at night. Technically, if it's, you know, as soon as an event happens, that that means, then the very next morning. But who's going to be responsible for tracking those triggers? Who's going to be responsible for acting on the triggers, et cetera? All of that should be included in your ordinance, because otherwise, you'll have the information out there, but that's ultimately all you'll have.
Thank you for that. And I think that the triggers themselves, because they're not coming out of thin air, they're going to come from our work with public health. Already, we have some information from the state as to what kind of triggers were there before, that that is kind of a public health guideline, not a public health officer to say when it cancels, but a public health guideline of when we can go ahead and retract this or implement this. And I agree that there needs to be some very specifics on when does it, if there's a trigger, what does that trigger look like, and when is that actually put into practice to make the change? It shouldn't be a, two hours later, you don't have to wear a mask. It needs to be a very set so that everybody can be made aware of the changes that will be coming.
And certainly, the public health information would be integral, I would assume, to your board's decision. It's just in terms of your control of facilities, it's just a slightly different issue. I just wanted to provide clarity for. And in regard to the triggers, that's going to be up to your board. As I said, it's just sometimes there's a cascade effect with these things. Public health may be helpful in assessing that as well.
Okay. Any further comments from the public in the boardroom? And if we can get the lights back on, if you have a comment, please come to the microphone.
And Matthew, you can take the share screen. Thank you.
Please come to the microphone. And then?
Christopher Veach has his hand up. Mr. Chair?
Okay. We'll go ahead and get to Director Veach in a moment. Let's go ahead and go with the public comment first.
John Moss, I wanted to ask Ms. Pyska, is there 65 deaths during the whole pandemic? Or 65 deaths in the last month? You said there were 65 deaths.
There's 66 deaths, and three of them were this month.
Okay.
In the past 30 days. And then we have Christopher Veach.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Christopher Veach, county librarian. Thank you for bringing this extra item forward. The honor system with regards to unvaccinated visitors to the library wearing masks doesn't seem to be working in all cases. We have many people entering our libraries without masks who most likely are not vaccinated, such as children. And I've heard from library patrons that this doesn't make patrons or staff who are concerned about COVID-19 feel like the library is a safe place, which means that they don't feel comfortable visiting the library at all. So, in order to prove we are providing a safe environment, I agree that we should require all who enter to mask. Thank you.
And I agree with your comment that the honor system has absolutely, unfortunately, failed us. It has not, not very honorable. Any other comments from the Zoom room before we bring it back to the board for action? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board. And if I may ask, before action is taken, is it possible, within the next week, I would say two weeks maximum, to try and come back with what those triggers would look like?
Yes. I appreciate you offering two weeks, just in case we need a little more time, but you bet.
Any other comments? All right. Well, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the urgency ordinance.
You offer the urgency ordinance?
Oh, offer.
And it does require a four-fifth vote in order to pass. Offer the emergency ordinance.
The urgency ordinance has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think I dismissed that.
Yes.
I'm sure you said aye.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear that microphone.
Go on. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 4.2, extra item. Consideration of extra agenda item. And CIO Hutchinson, if you can please provide the reasons to add this as an extra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is my mic taking me? Okay. The justification to add this as an extra item is the same justification as was just presented to you for the urgency ordinance. As you know, both of our local ICUs are full, and their emergency rooms are spilling over. If the county was still under the tiered system that the state had imposed on us over the last year, with our current daily case and testing positivity rates, the highest of any California county, we would still be in the purple tier. We all remember that purple tier, because we were in there for a long time. In the purple tier, all persons were masking indoors. So, it's staff's belief that the board needs to take immediate steps for the safety of our employees and the public geared toward keeping our offices open and needed services in place.
Okay. And again, needed to be discussed prior to the next posting of the agenda.
With the urgency ordinance just adopted, if this item wasn't now also taken up, the protocol would be inconsistent with what you just adopted.
Absolutely. Looking for a motion from the board to take up this extra item.
I move that we consider the extra item.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, second from Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, HR Director Pam Samick redrafted this protocol, and she'll present the changes to you.
All right.
Good morning, board. In anticipation that this would pass, we updated the protocol to require masking for all employees effective today. So, regardless of your vaccination status, all employees and public entering the building will be required to wear a mask. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? So, I feel the need to say something on this one. There's some absurdities about to our logical way of dealing with masks. Masks work, but it makes no sense when we are masked amongst colleagues and then sit down at the break table and eat without a mask together. And yet, here, we're saying, exceptions include when you're eating. And there's also, there's a certain inequity where if you're on the front line, you're going to have to put on your mask forever. If you happen to have an office, you get to close your door, and you get to take off your mask. Well, we just heard from Dr. Pace that this is much more aerosol style of infection, not just water molecules or not just touching other people's remnants of their viral infections. And I just, I think this is an easy one from top down to say yes to, but if you're at the? the bottom, it's a lot more difficult to have to deal with these rules. And some of it is just, it's just absurd. If you have to wear a mask, you should wear a mask. And if you don't have to wear a mask, then we don't have to wear a mask. And I think we should wear a mask. So eating outside, perfectly fine. Eating in a break room together, then what's the difference between working alongside each other, right next to each other at our desks versus drinking and eating together? I think that has been very obvious to everybody who has dealt with these circumstances. And if we're going to be serious about saying we should wear masks, then we should be serious about some of the absurdities about masking. And so I just needed to say that because it just, I don't want to do things because it feels good. I want to do things because it is going to be good. And by saying these are the exceptions, then what's, then let's go back to 4.1 and discuss, are we really asking people to mask? Because in the break room, it's perfectly okay not to. I walk into someone's office, they put on a mask, well, it's already in the air. I think we need to be a little bit more, if we're serious about the mask, then we need to be serious about the mask. And I think that we are allowing loopholes because those are the loopholes that were created for us to begin with. And yet, those loopholes are the arguments that are being made from people who are asking, why are we masking? And I think that those are very, we have to admit, legitimate questions. And so if we can minimize that, then let's do that. But let's not just do the same old thing because it's the same old thing.
The recommendations are based on, you know, what, still what the CDC and OSHA and the California Department of Health are still saying, these are the exceptions. And so we base the recommendations on that guidance. Now, we can certainly broaden it. We can certainly even close the break rooms, but most of our employees don't have a place to go and take lunch in our facilities. And so the limited break room space, or we can, you know, limit it to one at a time. So there are certainly some things we could do to tighten that.
And if you go back and look at earlier editions of the protocol, it did allow these kind of exceptions because that's been the standard practice per CDC guidance.
And I get that. And I know I'm being difficult, but at the same time, this is a mutated, different situation, more infectious. I think we did what we did was, this is the only way we can allow restaurants to open, and so eating became a exemption. And I'm not saying, close down the break rooms. That's the complete reverse of what I'm saying. I just, I feel like these laws are easier to handle from some perspectives than they are from other perspectives. And I just, we need to be cognizant that some of it looks ridiculous. When you have to walk into a restaurant with a mask, and then you can sit down and take off your mask, it's the same basic concept as working alongside your colleagues and then eating in the same break room and taking off your mask. And we have to figure out a better way for us to lead by example, to show that we are trying to stop this, or else it's not being stopped. And I'm being difficult, and I know this, but it's just, we can't ignore some of these obvious things. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. You know, those conversations you're having, you know, consider it difficult. What we're doing is we're talking about the reality of what we're dealing with here. Yes, those conversations about the break room, whether to have the mask on, but, you know, hopefully we'll follow that up. And I think it's in your, all right, now, social distance if you can't have the mask on, and continue those opportunities. You talked about walking into somebody's office that may have their mask off, but as long as you have your mask on, hopefully that's going to help you. And hopefully, we followed up with the earlier conversation we talked about, getting vaccinated. We're all sacrificing. Went out, we got vaccinated. We thought, oh, you get vaccinated, may have the opportunity where you don't have to mask anymore, social distance. Well, that's not the case right now. Yes, vaccinated, but now I've got to make those extra sacrifices to help us get through this hump of the pandemic and what's happening now. So clearly hear you, and I appreciate you bringing up those arguments because that helps just solidify that are trying to listen to all sides. And yes, this is something that's constantly evolving, but, you know, there is no silver bullet. Our best chance is vaccination or just completely isolate, and that is not a possibility. So trying to work through it. I appreciate you bringing up those conversations. And we're going to go back and forth. Early look at it. I don't have a timeframe, but we know between now and the end of the year, it's going to be very difficult. We have schools starting again, which we never have before, which also brings up different opportunities for folks that, you know, that have children that are working. So yeah, it's going to be challenging. So appreciate those conversations, but I think we've also learned more. You know, if you have the mask on, you're social distance, even when you're eating, and understanding who you're eating with. You know, ask those questions of your employee, you know, your fellow work folks and those types of things, you know, whether or not you're masked or not, or vaccinated or not, and just try and figure those things out. So be as safe as possible. So appreciate the conversation. Don't consider it. And I really like that, you know, we're hearing both sides of it. And we've learned a lot, like I said. And you'll make your decisions as you feel to put yourself in the best position. Eating outside probably is the best thing, but if you can't, know who's there and what's going on.
And thank you very much for those comments. I see that we are enhancing, and I guess it's a question for further updates because obviously this is still a work in progress, and there will be changes based on new information about where we are with the pandemic. And so we will update this again continuously based on new situations. The end game is not the mask. In my opinion, the end game is vaccination. And so I think that's what we really need to look at in this document, is how do we get more of our employees to make sure that they are as protected as possible? And I think that that's what we should be looking at. I think that that is a focus that we should continue to work on past this, after this item. What can we do to get more people to understand that this is the protection that you need? I've said my comments. Any further comments? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Looks like we have a public member. Sheriff Martin.
Brian Martin, Sheriff. Okay. So in hearing this COVID protocol, my understanding is that the other one's an urgency ordinance, which carries the weight and effect of the law, and it doesn't have any of those provisions. I don't know how we, as an employer, make a protocol that subverts the law that you're planning on passing and have that work. I give this as an example. There's a law against smoking in public establishment bars and whatnot. Certainly, a bar owner can't say, well, I have a protocol that allows me to have my employees smoke in the bar when the law says otherwise. I don't know that you can reconcile that. I think this is very well intentioned. I'm not here to debate whether or not masks are good. I'm wearing a mask, obviously. I'm not here to debate whether or not vaccines are good. I got a vaccination. You could probably infer what my opinions are on those types of things. I think both of them are very effective. I would encourage people to do so. What my concern here is that if you're going to simultaneously pass an ordinance which carries the weight and the authority of a law, but pass a protocol that has exceptions that aren't enumerated within that ordinance, it puts us in a very difficult position. Operationally, I think there's some issues that need to be dealt with. My department, we run the public safety entering point, the 911 dispatch center. Early on, when masking became a thing, we found that our dispatchers had difficulty being understood in some occasions on the telephone or on the radio, and that posed problems. And we were able to carve out some exceptions in there. I think those are very necessary. And I would say that this probably requires a whole lot more conversation because I know I'm not the only department head that might have some of these needs. The way the ordinance is written, it doesn't have provisions in there for where if you're alone by yourself. The ordinance is very clear. It says you got to wear a mask while you're in the building. There's no, there's no exceptions in there. There's no exceptions that defer to the county protocol. I think this can work. I just think it needs a little bit more work and before we try to pass it. I think that's all my, oh, you mentioned loopholes. The not wearing masks in the dispatch center, that's not a loophole. That's just a way that we operationally have to do business so that we can provide the best safety. And I'd like to see a little bit more discussion on that before we implement something that carries the weight of law.
Thank you for the comment. Any further public comment? And on the Zoom room, any public comment? All right, bring it back to the board. So I did hear two things that seemed to parallel one another, and that was the mentioning of social distancing in the break room. And same comment basically from Sheriff Martin is social distancing within the dispatch area. Since we've talked about it, but it's not necessarily in the exemptions, is that something that would be allowed with, within the exemptions? Or is that just something that's kind of the unwritten rule that if you're social distancing, you can during these times?
I don't know how to answer that exactly. You know, Bruno, we were, excuse me, I don't know how to answer that because we were, exactly, because we were masking for months and months and months. And, and we managed while employees took off their mask temporarily to eat food in the break room. And so I'm just not quite sure why this is a prevailing issue at this point. And the suggestion that the ordinance doesn't have exceptions, the protocol is, you know, is a policy for county employees to follow. So it does have some more specifics. The ordinance, which you already passed, does talk about the kinds of exemptions that are also referenced in the protocol to the medical exemptions and those kinds of reasons why some people can't wear masks. So I guess I'm just not clear on why this was managed effectively for months, and now is something we can't manage as written. Because it's written in a manner that's very similar to what it was before.
And I don't know about the word effectively, but it was in place prior to our surge in December. And we still had a surge and also outbreaks here. And at this point in time, it's being brought back. And I think that there's certain pitfalls to what we've been doing that isn't quite, that why ignore those potential pitfalls rather than discuss those? Ms. Grant?
I understand what everyone is saying. And I can tell you just from a legal standpoint, it's a relatively easy fix here. Whether anyone likes it, of course, is another issue. But your board could simply take the urgency ordinance back up again and simply add a line that says, the Board of Supervisors hereby directs County Administrative Office to prepare protocols to implement this mandate in a reasonably practical manner for county employees. Once you've done that, then this protocol can be taken up, and that would be the manner in which it's done.
But even without doing so, we can still take up these protocols?
No, you absolutely can. But if you're worried about a disconnect, as I said, one sentence will make it clear that you've given that direction. So there won't be an inconsistency with your urgency ordinance because it's reflective that these protocols would be developed. And those protocols could change at any time without having any effect on the ordinance if your board gives that directive. So it's just one sentence, but it precludes the argument, is what I'm saying. You don't obviously have to do it. You can move forward as you wish to, but it's a tie-up.
I appreciate the suggestion and advice. Any further comments or questions?
I'm fine with making that adjustment to eliminate arguments.
And I don't know how, what that saves for the arguments that I was making, but I, my arguments have been stated, and it does not seem to be creating any further conversations. So I think that personally, and we just got the okay from Ms. Grant, that it doesn't need to have that connecting addition. And if the board wants to keep moving forward, then I think that at this moment in time, my comments have been made, and the board can keep moving forward.
Again, my statement went to the possibility of an inconsistency, which is to avoid argument going forward. You add that line, and it's clear that your board is acting on dual purposes, and it's there in writing. It's, again, just a simple fix to eliminate that argument going forward in the future, and it's a continuing authorization for admin to be able to prepare these policies. So it's just a nice, clean way to do it if your board wishes to do so. As to the points you raised, Supervisor Sabatier, that, that is a larger issue, but there are ways to incorporate that as well.
Thank you. And so what does the board wish to do? Want to go back to 4.1 and look at updating, or move on with 4.2 without updating 4.1?
I'm okay with going back to 4.1 and.
Then we're going to need a motion to reopen 4.1.
But do we need to close this one first?
We can table this until further.
Table? Okay. I make a motion to reopen the urgency ordinance.
Motion from Supervisor Piska, and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant, would you be able to read the addition that you offered?
Yes, sir, and I can suggest placement if you like.
Please.
It would be Section 2 Sub C to be added. And the language would be simply that the Board of Supervisors hereby directs County Administrative Office to prepare protocols to implicate this mandate in a manner reasonably practical for county employees and subject to board approval. And then your board's going to approve it later. So, and it would be subject to board approval, you're done. That would be the only addition.
And she's going to do me the favor of.
Supervisor Crandall, did you have a?
Reminding me of that since I can't write it.
I was going to say so moved, unless we need to open it for.
We do need to open it up. I just wanted to check if you had a comment. Any other comments from the board? Open it up for the public. Any comments on the updated changes? And seeing none, both in the boardroom and on Zoom, bringing it back for action. And there was already a motion from Supervisor Piska and a second, or was that a motion from Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I said so moved.
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Piska. Sorry for the confusion, Johanna, but if we can please get a roll call.
So the action is just to offer, like reoffer the ordinance as amended?
The motion would just be to approve those changes, and then you'll go back and again move to wave reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only as amended.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then there would be a motion to waive reading of the ordinance as amended, have it read in title only.
So moved.
That's the easiest way to do it.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Piska, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you. And then.
Then the title of the ordinance should be read.
So moved to.
Just all the way.
An urgency ordinance requiring all persons, regardless of COVID-19 vaccination status, wear face coverings in county facilities.
Thank you. And then the final motion would be the motion to advance the ordinance as amended, and I believe your board selected 810.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Hold on. I'm sorry to put a break on this. Why are we moving it to 810? Urgency ordinance does not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just force of habit.
Okay.
I apologize. You can now just offer the ordinance as amended.
Offer, I offer the ordinance as amended. Offer, I offer the ordinance as amended.
Supervisor Pyska has offered it.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, we're ready to move on to item 4.2, which we had tabled and continuing the conversation. We had already opened it up for the public to comment on, just checking in on Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to comment on your comment about, you know, the masking, not having the masking in break rooms and such, but I think this protocol is just minimizing the exposure for our employees. And I just don't think it would be fair if we went back and closed break rooms or suggested only one employee in there at a time. I think just as a board, we're just trying to minimize the exposure for our employees. And like Supervisor Sabatier, Simon pointed out, just, you know, make sure you're being safe, know who you're, you're eating with. If, if possible, go outside, you know, stop and think before, before acting. But I, I do appreciate your comments and where you're going with that. And, you know, it's just, I think we have to just be realistic with this.
Thank you. Any further comments? And I think I'm going to open it back up to the public just because we came back to it. Any comment, public comment on 4.2? All right, bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to the consideration of amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, those completes our items from our extra items. And let's go ahead and I am also going to complicate things. I, I missed an item that I wanted to pull from the consent agenda and I'm wondering if we can get a cancellation of our motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda. I need to pull item 5.6. We had already pulled item 5.7 and 511. Wondering if somebody can make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I will move to reopen the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Simon, second from Supervisor Crandall. Roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
And I wanted to pull item 5.6 just before we terminate the rest. Any other items that need to be pulled? Okay, and from the public, any other items from the consent agenda that need to be pulled? Okay, and if we can get 5.1, 5.5, and 5.8, 5.10, and 5.12 approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with item 5.6. The reason that I pulled this is inside the memo, it does state, and I was just, I was not 100% comfortable without making the statement publicly. Says staff submits for your board consideration minor updates to the County of Lake hiring incentive policy and the updated employee referral program, conceptually approved on 6/22/21 pending the meet and confer meeting with the unions. The meet and confer did occur. This was approved. I would like, and I believe that the intent of this is for it to start as of June 22nd, 2021. And I just wanted to make sure that that was stated and put in the public record. That way there was no assumptions and it was clear to the public and to the board that this was the case if approved. And that was my only comment. I don't know if Pam Samick or CAO Hutchinson has a comment on this.
So Anita was just making a comment to me that may be relevant, but the, the cover memo for this item does state specifically that staff was recommending this have, have an effective date of June 22nd, 2021, which was the date your board gave it conceptual approval. So Anita, are you telling me you think that may be problematic? I had intended that, that we would do a minute order from this item so that it would be very clear to payroll as well?
If the board wants to be bound by its conceptual approval date, then I would suggest that you make note that it's effective as of the date of your board's approval, 6/22/21. And you need to avoid the use of the word retroactive because that appears that you're approving it today and pushing it back. And retroactivity can raise certain issues when you're not talking about a bargain for exchange that culminates in a written agreement. So in this case, I would suggest then, if your board's comfortable with the fact that you'd already approved it as of June 22nd, then you will state that this is effective as of the date of your board's approval, June 22nd. And I would use that language.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further comment from the board?
No, and I'm good with that suggestion.
Okay. And any comment from the public, both Zoom room and boardroom? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back and action. And if it's possible to provide that similar statement that Ms. Grant gave us.
Take a shot at it, I guess. So make a motion to approve. Anita, if you could give me a hand with that again?
Absolutely, sir. The approval would, the motion would be the recommendation to approve the policy effective as of the date of your board's approval of June 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 511 because I believe 57 is moved to a future agenda. And 511, just wanted to clarify, there was a couple of things that didn't quite add up and I spoke with the sheriff. If you open up the Cook's Liftgate invoices, they add up to 300 and I forget what it is, $321 and something cents. In the memo, it says approve for $300. In having communication with the sheriff's department, it seems that the sales tax was incorrectly added and that this is not a taxable purchase or payment. And so there are, and if we can put, put them on the Zoom, if we can post the new invoices that show that it is only for $150 and then because of the change from what was shared with the public versus what is now being shared with us, just wanted to make sure that the board and the public were aware of the changes and that we are approving for $300 and now the invoices match. And I don't know if the sheriff wanted to add anything to that, but it's just a simple clarification was all that I wanted to do. Any further questions or comments on this item? Okay, let's open it up for the public. Any questions or comments from the public? And let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve additional liftgate charges in the amount of $300 from the purchase of the kitchen equipment from Cook's Supply.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, Johanna, please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to item 7.2, consideration of appointment of District 5 Planning Commissioner, Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, I am excited to, to have a new planning commissioner. Ms. Field has volunteered to step up. She has extensive experience in land use growing up. Her father, who took her on many trips all over the country examining different projects. She is, also has a long history in ag in District 5, so I, I think she's going to really complement the rest of the commission.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments on item 7.2? Both the Zoom room, if you have a comment, please come to the microphone.
This is Joan and Joan Moss. I want to clarify that I thought that Lance Williams was the planning commissioner and has he done anything inappropriate or is he, has he been of interim planning commissioner? How did he get that position and is there any? I'm not sure what you mean.
I appointed Mr. Williams in January and he is exploring other opportunities that recently came to him and I'm really thankful for his service, but he, he's not with us any longer, so I've had to find a new planning commissioner.
No longer with us on the planning commission. Okay, bringing it back to the board for action. Thank you for the comment.
I move to appoint Maely Field as District 5 Planning Commissioner.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, a second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consideration of the following advisory board appointments, mental health advisory board for a 7.3 item. And as you see, we have Bonnie Blumenthal. And any comments or questions? All right. Let's open it up for the public. Any comments or questions? Okay. Just moving it on back, if somebody can make the motion for me, I know Bonnie is a very astute person who I think would be of great benefit to the mental health committee.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Bonnie Blumenthal to the mental health advisory board.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
I had to double check the address this time just to make sure. I knew she was in Clear Lake, but I wasn't quite sure where. Okay, let's see. If somebody turned on their sound accidentally, let's make sure to turn it off or else let's keep going. 7.4, consideration of amendment to the existing salary on appointment and advanced step appointment policy 1601.1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully HR Director Pam Samick's got her camera back on and will present this, but before she does, I just want to express my gratitude to Pam Samick and also to the Class Comp and Retention, Recruitment and Retention Committee. They really are the folks that have spearheaded a number of these policy changes that you've been considering. And so this one is kind of in the earlier stages of the process and today we're looking for your, your board's input so we can fine tune it. So go ahead Pam.
Good afternoon, Board. This afternoon, I'd like to present the changes to an existing policy for salary on appointment and advanced steps. And really what we were looking to do is to define what constitutes advanced steps so that we had some clarity, so that we weren't continually getting advanced step requests. And so the committee got together and we defined extraordinary for steps two and three as two to three times the minimum qualifications before they can ask for an advanced step. And then we added a caveat to this for highest previous rate so that when we are recruiting people from other counties, cities, state or federal with similar jobs, that rather than start at step one, we could place them at the step they were in for similar jobs. This allows us flexibility in bringing people with excellent experience from similar organizations to ours. And then three, we wanted to change the request for steps four and five to go to the Classic Comp Committee for review and recommendation back to the board as to whether or not we believed in the request for advanced steps four and five. And those are really the major changes. Like I said, this is an existing policy and we were just seeking to clarify it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I do have a comment and it's regarding the highest previous rate. I know that we've discussed this in the past, that our steps are kind of, kind of the loyalty steps of being part of Lake County. And so I guess my question is if somebody exceeds the educational levels and other qualification and meet advanced step two or three, can they add on to that by having a highest previous rate as well? Just looking, do they, do they work together or is it a one, two, or three?
They, they work separately. So the highest previous rate, we would basically be matching where they were at within a range of our salary schedule. So it would, you know, if they were at step two, say at Mendocino, and that is closest to our step three, they would come in at step three or step four. So that, I mean, we are starting to attract people because nobody's going to come to the county unless they're moving here for a lesser step than where they're at. So this just gives us more flexibility in assigning them a salary step.
And I appreciate the response. I'm thinking about the impacts and this is, this is a tough one because we want to attract, but definitely don't want to make people who have been here in order to reach those steps suddenly feel a little jaded about that highest previous rate. The rest I completely agree with. If you have the qualifications, step two or three, the four or five, at that point, that comes directly to us in order to have that final approval. But the highest previous rate, that's the only one that I struggle with that's on the list. Supervisor Simon?
I do appreciate those conversations and I know being part of the committee, you know, those conversations, you know, we try and really vet those out and that's what the committee does, the hard work on that. So Supervisor, when we come with the recommendations that we're bringing to the board, we kind of had those discussions. And the great thing about that, obviously, as you know, myself and Supervisor Scott sat on that board, but it's the directors, the folks that are affected by this, as we're trying to, you know, refine these rules or policies as they come to the board, we are having those discussions, so I appreciate it. But, you know, that, those are my comments as we move forward. I think, you know, as Pam said, you know, it's a work in progress. We're trying to make things streamlined as much as possible. But as you said too, retaining those great employees that we have here, there's always a balance in those conversations and I appreciate those conversations the committees have in both aspects, so.
I know, it's difficult. It's difficult. Thank you for that. Any other comment? I heard a click coming from Steph, no?
No.
Okay. Wasn't sure if there was a comment.
I'll just add to that. I know, I, I agree with you Supervisor Sabatier. We're trying to take care of our employees here and making sure that we're not bringing in people, you know... We're trying to take care of our employees here and making sure that we're not bringing in people, you know, above them. But the overall picture, we're, we're struggling with employees here. And we need to start thinking outside the box and what can we change in our policies to bring more employees here so our employees aren't doubling up on their work? That they have somebody sitting side by side getting this work done and maybe taking some of the workload off of them. So it's a, you know, both sides, bringing in people in to help. They may come in the same step you are, but you may have your weekends free or may not have to work so many hours or be so stressed out because there's so much work on you. So I think that's why we were, hopefully, that we will approve this today.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board. And I'll just make one last statement. Number two can change based on other actions that we can take. And so having it there, I think, can be helpful in the short term. And let's hope that we can find other fixes in the long term.
I agree, I agree.
So, Mr. Chair, the stage that this one is at, we're asking for conceptual approval by your board so the HR director can initiate the meet and confer process.
So there's a recommended action to approve amendment to existing salary on appointment and advanced step appointment policy 1601.1 pending meet and confer and meeting with the unions.
Second.
Motion advised Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that only leaves our calendars. If I'm correct, did I miss anything else? All right, let's go ahead and go through our calendars. Let's start with Supervisor Simon.
Finishing up the board and closed session today. And then this evening, have a Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce event this evening in Clear Lake. Right now, tomorrow, I have, I do have a risk reduction, a request from a tribal nation to reach out to Scotts Valley to talk about our risk reduction authority. So I'm going to attempt to try and get that set up for tomorrow. Reach out to Terry of Scotts Valley, their tribal administrator. And then on Thursday, have the CDD Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. And then Thursday night also, I'm going to be attending the, I was asked to attend the Clear Lake City Council meeting to talk again, once again, about the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. And hopefully, Clear Lake coming on, so I'll be attending that meeting Thursday night. I know that agenda has gone out. And then Friday morning, drought EOC meeting, so I'll be attending that. Saturday and Sunday, don't have anything on the calendar at this point. Did my, just for stuff, football is starting, so that'll be starting next week. So I'm excited about that, too, to see that support come back. Did CPR training class and other classes that were responsible for that, for coaching requirements. And then coming back on Monday, the 9th, I have a meeting with Carol. And then back here on Tuesday, the 10th, for our meeting. Just one thing, obviously, and I know, continue these conversations along with the drought and everything. We do have a lot of folks in the community that I know are hurting for water needs. And hopefully, we'll have some conversations on the drought, you know, task force maybe that we're having. But water purveyors to get water to folks that just need water to drink. That's, I don't know if the rest of you guys are experiencing those calls, but I'm starting to get those calls. And we'll just be reaching out to constituents, especially our elders and our seniors in our community. See if we can just make those connections. So I'll be returning some calls that I got this morning to talk about water purveyors, so. And nothing to do with cannabis, just survival water for individuals.
Drinking water, absolutely important. Can't disagree with that at all. Next, let's go to Supervisor Crandall.
So just reporting on last week, let's see here. Supervisor Sabatier and myself went to the Two by Two meeting and met with the group about the, the water situation and agreement and discussed different topics about, just kind of reinvigorating the relationship that we've had with Yolo in this, in regard to the, the water that comes from Clear Lake to Yolo County. And so I'll let Supervisor Sabatier elaborate further on it. We also conducted the Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting yesterday. And we're setting up some meetings in order to ensure that moves forward as well because we do not want to miss any benchmarks and weight in any sources or any senses at all and miss the boat on anything. So we also, of course, we had the special supervisors meeting yesterday. And then tomorrow is TID in the morning. I'm the alternate, but I just attend and listen. And East Region Town Hall is tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. The CSA II in Spring Valley, considering Thursday an office day. I'm trying to set up a meeting with the PG&E, just waiting on a couple other folks to, to help that mature. And then also trying to work on a meeting with one of the local tribes in Upper Lake. And I'll be in the office as well. And then Monday, meeting with the CAO, I'm back here Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tonight, I'll be attending the City of Lakeport's meeting. There's going to be a couple really good presentations. So if you live in the Lakeport area, it'd be good to chime in. They're looking at proposals for a community center and aquatic center. And also ACT is a grant that's coming through Hope Rising to get youth involved in government. And so we're talking to the city about incorporating this into the city to get youth involved so they'll want to be more involved in government and how it is that you can, you know, talk and have that three minutes and just educate, education when it comes to our, our youth. So that's tonight. Tomorrow, I will be at Hope Center at 8:00 in the morning. So I'll probably be there for the most of the morning. On Thursday in the afternoon, it'll be the COC meeting, which is done online. And then on Friday, I have emergency housing training at 10:00, and that's also online. And then on Monday at 8:30, a Hope Rising Executive Committee meeting. And then just getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Tomorrow morning, I have a TID meeting at 8:30. And I am speaking with a couple people. At 2:00, we're, we're talking about making gray water systems easy for people to renovate on their homes. And then in the, in the evening, the radio check-in, which is really important. It's fire season. That happens every Wednesday. Thursday morning, we have a CDD Committee meeting. And then that late afternoon, I'm, I have a middle schooler, so I'm going to be at orientation in Middletown. And Supervisor Simon and I had a really great conversation on Friday with the superintendent of Middletown, with Denise Palmeroy and Brock Falkenberg and Carolyn Holliday to strategize how we can get vaccination clinics set up on those orientation days where families and students will be coming together. MUSD hasn't hosted. And so they are really looking forward to working with our partners to just have one more opportunity for people to access vaccines. And then Fri- Friday, pretty exciting meeting with Chief Sean Tio set up with some of our other fire chiefs to talk about fuels crews. And so that's going to be at 11:00. And I may or may not be able to make the co-ed meeting, which is in the afternoon. And then Monday, with my meeting with CAO.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the board for the direction that it gave us for the code enforcement directions that was brought to the roadmap task force. We are, we reviewed some ordinance, which will probably, most likely, if everything works out, be on next week's agenda. And also, the, the direction to code enforcement was taken and had a good, healthy discussion on how to continue moving forward and being effective with the staffing that we have available for us to deal with. Just real quick, on Friday, we did meet with Yolo County Flood Control. Really good meeting. We, I'm glad that it was resurrected. Unfortunately, I will admit, it probably should have been resurrected before. But, you know, it's better now than never. And I think that we will work together really well to find better ways for people to draw water out of our lake, maybe using some sort of panel with a passcode so we know who's taking water and how much. Right now, everything is based on the honor system. Right now, anyone can draw, not anyone, if permitted, they can draw from so many different locations, whether it's at a creek, whether it's at the lake. And maybe we just need specific areas all around the lake to make it easy for them to access, but have specific locations for them to access. And I was not aware just how much the Yolo County writes, how far it went. It's not just Cache Creek, it's not just Clear Lake. It's all of the tributaries, everything that comes into the lake and everything that leaves the lake, including Indian Valley Reservoir. It's, it's, it's a much larger environment. But that allows us to duplicate our efforts if we find wrongdoing. Not only can we go after them if we have an ordinance, but we can pass on the information to Yolo County Flood Control, who can also add on to the bite to make sure that people use our waters accordingly and appropriately. So I think it was a healthy discussion. I think that they're looking forward to further discussion as well. And so it was a good day to have. Let me see, anything else? Today, same as Supervisor Simon, will be at the Clear Lake Chamber Mixer over at Howard's Grotto to provide some information of what Lake County is working on or what we are working on. I will be joining Supervisor Crandall at his Earth meeting on Wednesday. Wanted to provide some support because I just, it's, some of the issues that Supervisor Crandall is dealing with are county issues, not just District 3 issues. And so I think that having that support from another supervisor might be helpful in the conversation. Then we have our drought meeting early in the morning. And meeting with, meeting with some cannabis folks on Friday to discuss some changes they would like to discuss. Clear Lake City Council meeting at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday. Things seem fairly light so far. Meeting with our PEG station on Monday evening. Meeting with our CAO to prepare for the meeting on Tuesday. And also looks like the Latinos United of Lake County will be meeting that day as well. And I'd like to join that, that conversation to see how we can better implement and be a part of the Latino community here in Lake County. And other than that, that is it for me. Did we miss anything?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wondered if we could adjust our Monday meeting time to, would it work for you if we met at 12:30 instead of 2:00 that day?
Let's make it happen.
I have to go see somebody about that, so.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay, thank you.
I think I can accommodate.
Okay. I need to have to clobber you with it.
12:30, you said?
Yes, thank you.
You know, that is my, that is my birthday.
It's your birthday?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
It's just another day. All right. Did we miss anything today? Are we done? And closed session is our last items? So we will be closing our open session. And in our closed session, 8.5 has been pulled. We will not be doing the public employee evaluation. Other than that, I will read the rest. 8.1, conference, conference with labor negotiator, chief negotiator M. Long, county negotiator C. Hutchinson and P. Samick. And B, employee organizations, LCDDA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. 8.2, conference with A, temporary representatives designated to meet with county department heads regarding salary and benefits, and B, unrepresented management employees. 8.3, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, A, interviews of community development director, B, appointment of community development director. 8.4, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B, appointment of public health officer. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session, which I assume we're going to get a link in our email.
We're going to close out Zoom webinar and, and go to a separate Zoom link.
Okay.
And you would like to do that now, not take a break now?
Let's go ahead and take a lunch.
Okay. My guess is that closed session, my time estimate for it would be approximately half an hour for all items, so.
If all items is only half an hour, I think we power through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you might.
Let's power through it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you in Zoom. And thank you very much, everyone, for joining us.